I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, April 27th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. We have a quorum. Next up is approval of minutes from previous meetings. These include the meeting of April 13th, 2020, the public hearing on April 13th, 2020, and a special meeting on April 16th, 2020. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Bill Colbrook?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, will all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any. Next up is public input. We'll do that first, and that will be followed by a presentation by Police Chief Seraphin and Lieutenant Norton. Does the clerk have emails to read into the record first, and we'll follow that by verbal input?
Yes, I have ten of them.
Okay.
With Kay Kirkpatrick, who says, "I am outraged at how Aleah Lewis was treated by police officers on April 10th. Officers who are supposed to protect her, this is a grave miscarriage of duty to protect people. You must start handling domestic violence calls better." Next is Karen James. "I understand that when people film something, they do not always get the beginning or the end. What they get is the middle to a story and then fill in the blanks. Was she not warned to let them do their jobs, job and investigation? When she starts to flee, is that not reason to secure from getting a weapon? When the first police officer approached her, did he not try to secure her by putting her hands behind her back? Did the woman not throw the first punch? Did she not continue to fight or resist the officers? And finally, was she not smiling in her mugshot? I do find it interesting when folks call the police and then it does not turn out the way they thought. Well, then the police were in the wrong. But in the last month, we have had several shooting and domestic violence calls, and no one seems to think those were mishandled. Seems to me that someone is looking for a payout. I beg you not to give in and fight for our crew in blue." Next is Joey Zarnzy, Zarn-Z, to the Urbana City Council. Having watched the video posted to Facebook of the incident, I am appalled, if not surprised, at the violent and abusive conduct of the police against Aleah Lewis. Regardless of whatever her words towards officers were, she was clearly unarmed and no threat to the overarmed police on the scene. The officers clearly left a protected area near their squad cars to literally hunt down and assault a member of our community. I have little doubt that she, that if she were white and behaving in this matter, that she would have been treated very differently. The police were apparently set on punishing this woman for challenging their authority and approached her with the intent to cause her harm, knowing that if she resisted, they would be justified to brutalize her. We cannot continue to allow the police to terrorize our residents, especially and disproportionately our black residents. The officers involved should be immediately suspended, with the officer that punched her fired without any paid leave or severance, and prosecuted for assault." Next is Ron Kestner, to the Urbana City Council. "If better judgment prevailed, Aleah Lewis would be a free person today with no outstanding charges against her by the state and no wounds to her body caused by the police. Instead, the Urbana Police, the state's attorney and the Urbana City Council are following a familiar script when it comes to police violence. A, assert that the police follow procedural guidelines, and their actions should not be formally investigated, and B, point out that the public hasn't reviewed all the evidence and therefore is in no position to judge. What the public does know by virtue of citizen journalism is that no more than thirty seconds elapsed between the time the principal subject to the police, of the police call, Cameron Busby, was put into a police car, and Ms. Lewis was knocked to the street. Thirty seconds. If the police had waited two minutes, or five minutes, or ten minutes, could they have approached, have approached Lewis without assault rifles and done their business without violence? Unquestionably, there are always, there are ways to resolve confrontations like this nonviolently. And when the state's attorney approached Ms. Lewis's case, the state's attorney could have recommended that Ms. Lewis be released on her own recognizance, even chosen not to file charges, given the avoidable nature of the circumstances. Instead, the prosecution continues. And the truth remains, Ms. Lewis was not the reason why police were called that day, nor was she in violation of any law before the police laid hands on her. To repeat, Ms. Lewis did not do anything wrong until a wrong was done to her. Add as much evidence to the story as you like, and that truth remains. Here are three actions we can take, beginning, right, writing this wrong. A, contact the attorney, the state's attorney's office, to demand that the charges be dropped against Aleah Lewis. B, issue a formal apology on behalf of the city of Urbana to Ms. Lewis. And C, proceed with an independent investigation about the use of force against her by the Urbana Police." Okay. Next is Jeffrey Putney. "My name is Jeffrey Putney, and I live in Champaign. I write with regard to the April 10th incident of police violence in Urbana. Over the past week, city officials have not, have yet to apologize for the harm committed by our police officers. They have yet to apologize for the press release that attempted to gaslight people who reviewed, who viewed the video of the incident and were rightfully outraged. They have yet, they have yet released a statement for how they will support the victim of police violence in her community. This is unacceptable. Our community must do better. You've also heard the police chief answer questions about this incident by using technical sounding language like brachial stun to describe the need to punch a woman while three armed officers lay on her. I do not want to hear this type of reprehensible rhetoric at today's meeting. This is not how you support a victim of police violence. I fear that a real scenario for today's council meeting is that the police chief will give a single-sided public platform from which he will put forth a narrative that erases and obscures a woman's intensely personal experience of trauma at the hands of police. Again, this seems to be a continuance of harm by public officials, and I would ask that you reconsider. And finally, I again ask the city to drop all charges against this victim of police brutality. Thank you for your time." Next is Emily Close. "Good evening. My name is Emily Close. On April 17, Urbana City staff posted a video on the city's Facebook page called 'A Message From Diane,' Mayor Diane Wolf-Marlin. In this video, the mayor discusses the April 10 arrest of Aleah Lewis by Urbana Police Officers. During this video, the mayor alludes to the CPRB, which is Urbana Civilian Police Review Board. Here are some facts the mayor admits when discussing the CPRB and the complaint process. First, the CPRB was established in 2008. It was not the board that some citizens of Urbana had hoped for, but it's what they got from city leaders who were reluctant to ask for police accountability back then. Mayor Marlin is correct when she states that the CPRB is an appeals board. She fails to mention, however, that only three, that's three citizens' complaints of the many filed with the CPRB have made it to the appeal stage since the board was formed twelve years ago. In fact, this third complaint was only heard by the appeals board on January 29 of this year. Second, while her, in her video, the mayor tells citizens that Chief Seraphin will conduct an expedited review of the use of force tactics used against Ms. Lewis, citizens may not be aware that the Urbana Police Department is 100% in charge of investigating the conduct of Urbana Police Officers. There is no independent third party. The obvious conflict that exists when the police department investigates its own officers means that an investigation into police conduct by design lacks objectivity, transparency, and impartiality. Third, in the April 17 video, Mayor Marlin asked citizens to refrain from a rush to judgment about how police officers conducted themselves on April 10. However, the mayor fails to mention that Ms. Lewis herself has only forty-five days from that incident date to file a citizen complaint with the CPRB if she chooses to do so. Let's assume that Ms. Lewis is not incarcerated, is able to get her trauma under control, knows how to file a FOIA request for records, and actually gets some of those records from the city's FOIA officer despite the city's best efforts to withhold those records. Forty-five days is a very small window of time in which to clear those hurdles and others, especially for someone facing criminal charges that probably will not be resolved for months. The reality is that Ms. Lewis will almost certainly be unable to file a timely complaint because of the obstacles placed in her way by the city. So Mayor Marlin, if you're going to open the door on the civilian police review board and the complaint process, you can expect citizens to walk through that door, ask questions, and demand answers and accountability. Thank you for listening." Next is Catherine Majewski. "Hello, my name is Catherine Majewski, and I'm an Urbana resident. I am deeply concerned by the response, or lack thereof, from UPD and the city of Urbana regarding the violent arrest of Aleah Lewis. The continuing denial of what is clearly visible in video footage is galling at best and manipulative at worst. I would like to voice my support for dropping the charges against Ms. Lewis and for an independent investigation of the incident, including a full public release of the associated footage. Thank you for your time." Next is Tanya Josick, Urbana City Council. "I am writing to request that the city stop defending police actions, especially ones of violence, in reference to the incident on April 10. I strongly encourage the city to drop all charges against victims of brutality." And the last one, I think, is Josu David Cisneros. "Dear council members and mayor, thanks for this opportunity to share my public comment with you. I write to express my deep concern at the violence experienced by an Urbana resident at the hands of the UPD, as well as the conspicuous, conspicuously callous response by our city leadership. You are already aware of the many instances of discrimination and the violations of UPD policy that occurred on April 10. You have seen the shocking and disturbing video. You have read the lists of nearly a dozen UPD policies that officers violated, as was documented by one member of the public. You have read the official responses by city leadership, including the highly problematic press release by Urbana Police Lieutenant David Smizer, which ironically validates all of the abuses documented in the video, such as that even though Lewis began arguing with officers and started walking away from them in compliance with their orders, somehow this necessitated a patrol sergeant to approach Lewis, in spite of her compliance, and tackle her to the ground. Or the claim that an officer's punch in the head and knee in the ribs, all while awkwardly carrying an assault rifle, were somehow necessary to distract an already prone woman. And you have heard that, heard the police chief, whose defenses are not any more exculpatory, who calls a punch to the head of a prone person a brachial stun, and argues strangely that the officer's provocative and aggressive behavior, moving toward Ms. Lewis and attempting to lay hands on her, was a response to their concern that a gun was still present on the scene. Most problematic of all has been the city's overall response to this incident. Our leadership has sought to spin justifications for these actions, to appeal to special evidence not available to the public, and to ignore issues of racial biases that relate to this incident, even though you are happy to talk about these issues when turing the city's efforts to eliminate disparities in traffic stops and other forms of policing. It's time for the city to stop these denials and hollow defenses, and to provide a full, transparent, and just accounting of the, of and inquire into these events, including appropriate disciplining of the officers involved, public transparency in the inquiry, and restitution to the target of this abuse. Thanks for your service to the city."
Charlie, I think you missed Mark Ensland.
I missed one. Okay, let me find, Mo Barkensland. You're right, I'm sorry. "To the council and mayor of Urbana, the video of Urbana Police approaching stationary, hands visible, unarmed, vocal Aleah Lewis, tackling her, punching her, handcuffing and arresting her is evidence of three problems I see in the encounter. One, uncalled for violence against a non-threatening person. Two, lack of effective de-escalation effort in relation to a person vocally expressing upset. And three, lack of social distancing, distancing and PPE during a pandemic. A fourth problem that I learned from press reports is that after the, after her arrest, Ms. Lewis was taken to jail, to the jail during a time when jails and prisons have proven to be particularly unsafe places during the pandemic. And given our history locally and nationally, it is hard to dismiss the impression of racial profiling was also a factor in this incident. In 2005 or so, I attended a hearing at the Urbana City Building chaired by Laurel Pressing on, on proposal for civilian police review board for Urbana. And I recall the testimony of a young woman who told a similar story of unreasonable behavior by Urbana Police. As I remember it, she was at a party where there'd been a fight, police were called, and she was upset the police had not called an ambulance for a relative who was bleeding. She was vocally urging that they call an ambulance, and the response of the police was to knock her to the ground and arrest her. This was to me a clear indication that Urbana residents needed recourse to address such misconduct. To remedy the current incident, I think disciplinary action against the officers and a call for dropping any charges against Ms. Lewis are appropriate." Okay, is that all ten? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, does anyone wish to speak to the Urbana City Council tonight? Please use your hand-raising button if you can.
I do.
Sarah Nixon?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Sarah Nixon. The Aleah Lewis case sends a terrifying message to victims of domestic violence in our community. And the Urbana Police Department's incompetence in responding appropriately is all too familiar to me personally, as a survivor of domestic violence who, in the past, had to call on the UPD for help in crises, only to find myself and my child repeatedly failed and revictimized by our police force. Many other concerned community members have already addressed a range of important and deeply disturbing facets of this incident. I would like to add two more concerns. One, I know from my own experience that in a domestic violence crisis situation, the victim is very likely to be experiencing a state of complex traumatic shock, the symptoms of which can include disorientation, incoherence, reactivity, and cognitive difficulty in processing and responding to even simple questions or commands. To an untrained person, these characteristics of trauma, traumatic shock, can be mistaken for intoxication and even mental illness. But there is no excuse for Urbana Police Officers to be untrained in domestic violence situations. And the second issue I need to highlight is the glaring failure on the part of the Urbana Police Department in not immediately transporting their victim, whom they had violently attacked, to the emergency room for her trauma and injuries to be assessed. She very likely suffered concussion from the brutal punch delivered to her head, but we will never know, will we? The fact that they took her instead to jail is unconscionable and raises many deeply troubling questions, most especially because this incompetence and misconduct is a longstanding problem with Urbana Police Department. And I join the community in demanding a full, independent, domestic violence-informed inquiry into this unacceptable incident. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? I'm not seeing-
There are two mayor, Dottie Vera Weiss and Ben.
Okay. Dottie, go ahead.
Oh, Ben's, Ben's been unmuted.
Ben? Okay, go ahead, Ben.
Hi there, Ben Jocelyn. I just want to take this time to say, choosing to follow the rules that have been systemically put in place to disadvantage black people and the privileged police officers is not a racially neutral or morally neutral thing to do at this point in time. We know the history. It's borne out across the nation, across time, and across the, you know, the history in our jails here. Choosing to say, "We follow procedures," and being able to write it into a way where you can try and pretend that you're innocent, doesn't make it morally right. This is Urbana's chance to say, "We believe in a better future for all of our residents," and a failure to do so by the part of anyone who's in city government to say, "We need, demand better. We need to demand better for the people of this town. This is morally not okay and cannot be tolerated." Anyone who doesn't stand up against police violence and racialized police violence, misogynistic police violence, is complicit in the thousands of people who are tortured by it every year. It's not okay. It is your obligation to stand up and protect the people of this town. This is your time. You have to do something. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Charlie, is there anyone else waiting?
Yeah, Dottie Vera Weiss.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Okay, good evening. I agree with many of the things that others have said this evening. I have reviewed several times the bystander video, and although I recognize that it is from one perspective and was not able to either pick up well the words that the, that Aleah Lewis may have said, nor all the details of the actions that went on, it seemed very clear to me that she was not a threat to the police officers, that if they had concern that she might have a gun, then why weren't they stationing somebody near her and dealing with her for the long beginning of the video? It seems as though that might have been an excuse that was raised in retrospect to justify the actions that, that occurred. I believe it's really important that the body cam videos be released to the public and not in edited portions, because it can always be edited to include or exclude the issues that the person doing the editing wants to have seen. So I believe that we need to have a more clear-cut understanding of some of the actions of the police, and I doubt that there is full justification for them, but I believe that the public and Aleah Lewis herself really deserve this. I also agree that it would seem appropriate to drop charges, because I couldn't see anything that she did that justified the approach of the officer to her in the beginning, and the complaints that have been raised against her were basically that she was resisting what appeared to be his unjustified attack. I hope that you will do what you can to drop the charges, to arrange that they be dropped, and that there be an apology and medical treatment for any injuries that she sustained, payment for them, and also for the emotional injuries that she suffered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I've had two more come in while, to email.
Okay, go ahead and read, please.
From Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Bishop Underwood, they indicate that they're, they're concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. And then from Alan Axelrod, "Good evening, city council. When the city council does not respond to public comment, the side mentions are even louder, as that uttered by Eric Jacobson at the last meeting, last public meeting. Folks are coming with severe concerns. They deserve to be listened to with a respect, with respect at a minimum." This is... Okay, that's the last of them.
And anybody else wish to speak?
One hand just went up. Daniel Jared Lockemaker.
Hi, just a question first of understanding. Will the public comment be available after the statement from the chief of police?
No, this is the only time for public comment.
Okay, then I'll go ahead now. Um... First, I, I think it would be beneficial if a dialogue were to actually be taking place between the city council, police, and the citizens of Urbana, for us to be given the opportunity to respond after hearing whatever new or different information it is that the chief of police is about to present. It, it makes it a very lopsided and time-delayed and, um... Not very cohesive process for us all to be making statements now, and then after a week when we, many of us also made statements, only after our statements will some information be given, we'll be then waiting for X amount of time before speaking again. Doesn't seem very efficient. What I would like to specifically address is this idea of a brachial stun, or, or whatever, whatever term the chief may end up using, if, if he addresses it at all, I, I don't know. As I referenced last time, I was a member of the United States Navy. I worked as a hospital corpsman, and I was trained in restraint procedures. I worked in a detention facility of the United States military. I speak from experience then in saying that a blow to the head is never an acceptable action in a restraint. Neither kneeing nor punching are allowed, even in circumstances when pain-compliance techniques might be being used. What was depicted in the video, and again, I echoed Dottie Vera Weiss's sentiments that I do not have access to, because it has not been available to the other angles and perspectives on this. That's a problem as well. But from the limited footage that I have, it is very clear that it was a blow to the head that Aleah received, and that in no means I, I can imagine is allowed by the Urbana Police, if, if it's not allowed as an acceptable restraint procedure by the United States military. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the presentation by Chief Seraphin and Lieutenant Norton. As way of background, as I indicated last week, I've asked the chief to provide an overview of the April 10th interaction between a female resident and the Urbana Police. The Urbana Police were initially called, responding to a call for service related to a shooting near Colorado Avenue in Cottage Grove. As most of you know, but this is for the public's information as well, a portion of that interaction was captured on video by a member of the public and posted to Facebook. So tonight's presentation includes much more detail and context before, during, and after the incident than what was shown on the video on Facebook. And I wanted to let you know that the city was cleared by the state's attorney's office to share some of the body camera footage and patrol car footage, video with the public, and that footage is included in the presentation tonight. In addition, the internal use of force review has been completed, and I believe a copy of that report was mailed to city council members just before the council meeting. It was just completed late this afternoon. That report will be included in the meeting record. And finally, I've asked the state's attorney's office to review the incident as well. That has not yet been done. But tonight, we will focus on the incident itself, and I'm going to turn this over to Chief Seraphin and Lieutenant Norton.
Thank you, mayor. I assume you can hear me here as we're trying out the new Zoom meeting. Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Okay. Well, the presentation should be up, the initial slide. Can you see the initial slide?
No.
I do.
I may be having a problem at my, on my end.
Your, your video is also frozen, Diane.
Okay.
But we can see the presentation.
Okay, go ahead with the presentation. I'll try another computer.
Okay, thank you. My name is Bryant Seraphin, and I am the police chief here in the city of Urbana. Tonight with me is Lieutenant Jason Norton, and we are going to do our very best to present the full facts on the event from about seventeen days ago. There has been a lot of discussion, I've read a lot of emails that have come in on this, and I hope that tonight, we can at least show that there seems to be a running concern about a lack of response, and clearly I don't want that to be the case, and we hope tonight is at least beneficial to all, to all the citizens. I would like to thank Julia Reeves, state's attorney, for meeting with us and allowing us to be able to use these videos as there are to, excuse me, as there are pending criminal cases. Tonight, you'll see many different perspectives. Multiple body cameras, some squad car video, and I hope that as we go through this, citizens in the council can understand all of the facts, as the officers knew them to be at the time the event occurred. And that is extremely important here. That's the standard that the United States Supreme Court uses with regards to judging officer behavior. In addition to these facts, we're also going to help illustrate and discuss tech- In addition to these facts, we're also going to help illustrate and discuss tactics. Things that we ask the officers to do, things that we have trained them to do, things they learn right here at our very own University of Illinois Police Training Institute. And when we do these, the analysis ultimately will boil down to were the officers within policy and was the action or actions they took legal? And we hope to be able to answer those questions tonight as we as we move through this presentation. As we as we move on, I think there's some important clarifications I want to make at the beginning of this. And there's some key terms that we we use in policing and I want to just make sure that everyone sort of gets a chance to understand some of some of these things. In other words, there is a difference between a frisk and a search. A frisk is something that we do as police officers when we want to find if there are any weapons. It will be more of a crushing of exterior material, clothing. And those types of things, it's not as intrusive as a search would be. A search where we might go into someone's pockets, remove the hanky and determine if there's any contraband in the hanky. So a frisk is less intrusive than a search. First, like I said, is traditional use in the context here of weapons, sometimes you'll hear referred to as an add-on. There's a detention is a is different than an arrest. In nineteen sixty-eight, a lot of people seemed to hear about the the term Terry Stop and that was the Terry versus Ohio case that allowed so that officers could go in temporarily detain someone so that they could conduct an investigation. Which is different than someone making a custodial arrest and moving them to perhaps another place like a jail or a police station. When we talk about the the detentions, sometimes it might include handcuffing. That doesn't necessarily convert it into an arrest. Reasonable suspicion versus probable cause. There's a continuum, I guess, of legal certainty that we want to just make make sure that we understand tonight. At one end, if I were to assign, I guess, a numerics to it, a reasonable suspicion would be toward the lower end of legal certainty. Something in the neighborhood of a twenty to thirty percent certainty. A lot of people hear about probable cause. And traditionally, it's more likely than not something would have occurred. And so that's more in the fifty-one percent certainty. And then, of course, at the far end, proof beyond a reasonable doubt, what we use for higher than ninety percent of certain level. Some of these terms are because kind of refer back as we presentation. At this point, I will turn over the next slide to Lieutenant Norton, who has been a defensive tactics instructor, both at our department and at the university's Police Training Institute. And he's going to cover now an overview of the use of force continuum.
So like the chief said, I'll give you a brief overview of what police officers from coast to coast are trained in. This is the use of force continuum from the Police Training Institute and continues like this are used across the nation from coast to coast. There are a few variances, but this is the one that typically that our officers are exposed to. You'll see on the right hand side, or I don't know what side of the screen it would be for anybody else. Our right hand side is officers, left hand side would be subjects. And they're based off a reasonable officer's perception of the subject's actions. At the very bottom of the of the skills, you'll see a coopter person, basically, an officer's response to a coopter person is just open hands or asking them to do whatever the officer wishes. As far as put their hands behind their back or just talking to them, you don't really have to do any control hold with a with a coopter person. A passive resistor, who's somebody who is basically not not resisting an officer, but maybe verbally resisting, not not any kind of, you know, physical activity as far as resisting. They may be a protester just sitting there and not doing anything. So that'd be more of a passive resistor. An active resistor could be something as little as when an officer goes to arrest somebody and they grab their arm, that that person tightens their arm. So they have some kind of reaction or muscular reaction to to an officer. What we're talking about here and you'll see in the videos coming up is a person who is aggressive assailant, somebody who is actually fighting with the police, physically fighting with the police, which would give the officers the right to use impact weapons, baton, taser, and strikes and able to to try and control this person and bring them under control. So that's what we're talking about here is a level four person basically throughout the confrontation.
So the first thing that we're going to start with is the nine one one call. Throughout this, there's been slight redaction to the the name of the caller. So I'll point that out when you hear a blank in, there's a couple of short blanks in the middle. But this is the entirety of the nine one one call except for the the name of the reporting party. And we'll back out to get to the right slide. Tampa County nine one one, what's the address of the emergency?
Um, it's eleven oh two East Colorado Avenue.
Can I repeat the address, sorry, please, sir, correct?
Eleven oh two East Colorado Avenue.
Okay.
Boy that had shot himself, but he's like walking up and down the street with a gun in his hand. I wanted to like report that because along taking groceries in, we heard like a loud gunshot and he fell, but now he's like up stumbling, back and forth in the street and a little girl was like behind him. Trying to, I don't know, see, I don't know, but he got the gun in his hand. Out in his hand and stuff like that.
Can you just try again for me?
Uh, he's, I think he's American, he has on a black coat and blue jeans, like joggers with red lines.
Did you see the guy?
Yes, I think he was like, he had it in his hand, the clips fell out and hit the ground and he put it back in there and tried to cut the gun in his hand.
Can I have the name, please? How you feeling? You live there at eleven oh two Colorado?
Yeah, but he's like outside my apartment.
On Colorado or on Cottage Grove?
On Cottage Grove, I walk across like Dollar Tree.
And so there's a female with him?
No, right, she's African American and she has like a crew neck on that's black and a ponytail on her head.
All right, thanks for calling, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
So that is the initial nine one one call. And as a matter of fact, it was the only call received on this particular incident. So that is the initial facts. And I know there's been a lot of discussion regarding some of the domestic violence issue. We're going to go into a little bit into some of that maybe a little bit later. But the call, the initial call was not for domestic violence, but for a shot fired in and out of subject and possibly an injured subject. So now what we'll do is move over to the actual an overview of this event and I'll let Lieutenant Norton sort of explain this particular scene over.
So Ms. Lewis and Mr. Busby live at this apartment on Colorado, it's a hundred. So the incident started here, there was a shot fired from this address, traveling down the street, roughly a block down the street through a window into a an occupied apartment at eleven oh two. They then took this path down Colorado onto Cottage Grove where they were ultimately stopped by the police as they were found at the intersection of Cottage Grove and Glenwood Oaks.
So one of the things that you'll hear next is we're going to play the dispatch footage. This has been compressed just for time's sake. So this is not necessarily exactly live action time, but you will hear now the officers being dispatched. You will hear what they were told and you will hear them coordinating their their response. One of the things that you'll hear at the beginning of this is you will hear officers reacting to a couple slightly further north on Cottage Grove. And so there were essentially two young African American couples that were actually viewed in the area and so that caused officers to have to split their attention between the two couples. So we'll go ahead and play the radio traffic at this time.
Three seventy-nine, three seventy-eight, possible shooting on Colorado, on Cottage Grove. Caller from eleven oh two Colorado, this shirt allows pop. Now there's a gentleman walking up and down Cottage Grove with a gun in his hand. He looks like he's wounded and there's a black female with him. One call on this from inside eleven oh two Colorado, it's a male, black, white coat, black pair of blue jean, pink joggers or blue joggers. She says it's magazine thought of the gun. He then picked it up and put it back into the gun, put it on his waistband. There's a black female with him, this is her crew neck shirt, walking up Cottage Grove.
Fifty seventy-nine, are you behind me? We head towards the other side of Sunny Crest Park. Seventy-eight, seventy-nine are coming from the north, there are another unit that can go around to the south side of Colorado. I got three seventy-nine, they're capable of, we're on Cottage Grove, we're out right now.
I hung up the phone on her, she said they were on Cottage Grove in front of eleven oh two Colorado.
You have. So what you've just heard right there, we'll cut back in in a couple of different times. We might pause to help explain a couple of things. What you heard right there was Sergeant Mike Cervantes, four twenty-two is his ID number. You heard him asking if he had the air. Essentially, what that means is that officers when responding to a severe, potentially dangerous incident will ask to have the air so that other officers not involved don't inadvertently use the radio traffic for something less important. So in this particular case, that's what he's confirming that they do have the air. For those who don't know, the University of Illinois Police Department in the Urbana Police Department share a radio frequency and so that's sometimes one agency might be doing something and not realize what the other what the other agency has. So that's essentially what that phrase means.
We got a male walking away from us, walking back towards the castle, the female. She had a gray shirt and looks like dirty. Twenty-two, it's a male up there, she, they were together. They're the unit behind Kinda Market. Walking towards you through the park. In the west side of that. He's going to the rescue park now, walking towards.
So what they're describing now is the first couple that they encountered. The male juvenile is walking up into Crestview Park and they're getting ready to get out with him.
Four twenty-two, the two that are in front of your squad match the description. Three forty-seven, that was four twenty-two.
So that that concludes the radio traffic. We're kind of going to flip to the body cameras of the two officers who you heard just arrive on, see.
Three seventy-nine, three seventy-eight.
And so we're going to, now now we will, we'll move ahead, we'll move to those body cameras in just a second. One of the things, again, what I want to make sure that is clear is, could you might pack it up one slide, please? At the top of the screen, you'll see the words Crestview Park. That in that area is where roughly where there's a juvenile that's been detained from the first couple. And so they, the officers are dealing with that subject there. There's also been a female who's been addressed up on the north piece, further north of Cottage Grove, sort of where it may, I think, sort of ends. But what we're going to do here real fast is we're going to show you then the of this juvenile subject a similar sort of tactical response from the officers. And I'll have, and Lieutenant Norton can can help, I guess, help me out a little bit here with regards to this is sort of what we want to have happen. And so if we scroll up to the next slide, what we'll see is you'll get, if you look on the edge of the screen, you can see one officer there who's going to challenge him from from farther back. We're going to want to have them prone out with their on the ground. That way, if indeed an attack were to come, it would take longer for the officer to get up and stand up. And this is a standard tactical practice. In this particular case, the body camera you're watching is from an officer approaching from the rear if possible. Sometimes you can't always do that, but that gives the officer the advantage if we're approaching from the rear. Lieutenant, I don't find missed anything on on those, if you want to flesh any more out on that.
Now, Chief, you're right, if you're looking for the hands to be splayed out and the feet. So it takes a lot of movement for an individual to actually go for a weapon or or even have do anything that wouldn't be what the officers officers are expecting, so.
So yeah, at this point, we'll go ahead and play this, play this video for you now. And as another point, this is occurring at about the same time as the other event that's occurring down actually in the street. We're not sure which couple is the the couple that the caller's called called about for for certain here. So I'll go ahead and let Lieutenant Norton play this video.
Hey, quiet back, sir. They're just being detained at the second, we had a reported that someone had a gun, okay? Did you hear any gunshots down here? Are you hurt at all? Do you have any injuries, sir? Okay, I'm Sergeant Corey Coker, this is Officer Brian Ingram, Urbana Police Department. We're going to roll you on this side, okay? We'll patch you down for weapons. We had a gentleman who claimed that he had he had a gun, okay? And he put the gun back in his waistband, he shot himself accidentally. So we just want to make sure you're not the guy, okay? So make sure you're quiet. What's your name, buddy? Bring your knees up to your chest and we'll stand you up. Just do it like this, bring it, bring your knees up this way.
It was at this point where the officers that are down on Cottage Grove Grove began to address Ms. Lewis and Mr. Busby. So they're going to move this juvenile behind the car so they can finish speaking with him.
So one of the other points that has been brought up numerous times with regards to this incident has to do with the the usage of the the long guns, the rifles and why were they needed and essentially the answer is this. Armed subjects in this open air environment dictates some rifles deployed. So when we have longer distances to cover, whether that's outside like this, whether that's a school shooter, whether that's in a shopping mall. Those those longer distances, we want the officers to have some tactical advantage and that long gun, that rifle is that advantage. They are indeed more accurate than officers with a pistol when we start to stretch the distances out farther. So that is why one of the points that's been brought up many times, I just wanted to say that as we kind of move into the next video here, this is Sergeant Cervantes body cam video. We will go and play this one here now and we will have some other points to make as this as this goes along.
So as this video starts, Sergeant Cervantes is is on his way up the hill on Crestview Crestview Park to assist the other two officers up there with the first juvenile. When, if you remember from the dispatch, Officer Marquez redirects Sergeant Cervantes to come back down to Cottage Grove and address the two that match the description from the dispatch that are in front of his car. So that's how this video starts.
Hey, buddy, show me your hands. Show me your hands. Show me your hands, both hands, show me your hands, both hands. Come over this way, man. Hands, keep your hands where I can see them.
So as you can tell, in the first few seconds here, he's asked to see his hands five or six times. People will harm us with their hands or harm the most people, as a matter of fact, as you, he had, the report was male subject with a gun. And Lieutenant Norton can fill in a little bit more, but most people will keep those sort of. Most people will keep those sorts of things in their waists. And we want to be able to see their hands. It's critically, critically important for officer safety discussions.
So typically, when, when people aren't on a shooting range or, or in some kind of law enforcement or security, they'll carry holsters. A lot of times they'll, they'll carry their guns in their waistbands. And even sometimes with concealed carry, they'll carry handguns in their waistbands. So that's where we want to keep people's hands away from their waist, if possible at all times, especially when there's an armed subject call.
Dude, we got a report of somebody with a gun. Keep your hands where I can see them. Dude, we got a report of somebody with a gun. Get down on your knees. Get down on your knees, both. Get, hey, down on your knees. Down on your knees. Do not reach. Do not, get down on your knees. Unit on Cottage Grove, coming in from the south side. Are you hurt, man? Dude, are you hurt? Okay, you're limping a little bit.
I wanted to stop for just a second to point out something that both Sergeant Coker did that you just saw that Sergeant Servantes also did. Number one, they told both, they told them why they were being stopped. Sometimes in the heat of the moment, we don't always do that. But they both, in both of these encounters, told them why they are being stopped. In addition, both sergeants asked if they were injured, if there were any injuries. As you recall from the, the initial information, they were reporting that they, perhaps the subject had been shot. So both sergeants do that, and I think that's important to, to point out in a, in a tense, rapidly evolving sort of.
Ma'am, get down for me, just get all the way down. The guy, stand up, walk towards us. It's on. Yes, it's on, come on. Find a female. She's not being arrested. Relax, follow what we're saying. Stop walking. Well, you ain't finna walk home, you finna walk away, you finna go to jail. You got him, you got him. Come here, come here. Turn around, turn around. Fucking thumb.
Bitch, you're taking me out, I hope you got that on camera. I hope you got that on camera.
Stop resisting, stop resisting. Okay, stop resisting. Stop, just keep your hands back here. Stop resisting. Just relax, calm down. This is, she's going to come out of this. Well, you don't approach us, we got guns and stuff.
You are nobody from within bed. You're just like me, bitch, literally.
You act like a lady, you're not, right now.
So I know that was a lot to watch right now, and we're going to try to unpack a, a little bit of this. And we'll actually have a little bit of clearer view when we get back to the other, when we watch the, another section of video. I might want to point out that with regards to this event, that the status of, of the young lady as a female, Ms. Lewis, is not necessarily relevant to our analysis. And I'm going to let Lieutenant Norton speak for just a second on that.
So yeah, I, I've been here for, for over 20 years and I've had many arrests. Some were female and some were ones where females actually fought the police. There may be some kind of misconception, but a, a female can be just as deadly or just as hurtful and be just as powerful as some males. I've had myself been tried several times by female arrestees. And it, it doesn't matter male or female, it's determination, maybe, you know, what, what somebody may be under the influence of. But they can be just as harmful and just as capable as a male.
One of the things, another thing that has been brought up has to do with de-escalation techniques. And in this particular instance, I want to point out again that at the time, it was unclear who had a gun. We had some initial information. But when we deal with armed subjects, especially in a male-female couple, it's unclear who might have it. Sometimes the guns are passed from one to the other. The officers don't know who's armed. And the, to, to have de-escalation, in this particular instance, we needed to make sure that the scene was secured right there. This is occurring at 4:30 on Good Friday afternoon. There are other people out. As a matter of fact, you will see cars out. This is, we cannot at this point, due to this environment, be able to engage in the escalation tactics that are a negotiation. And she was not willing to negotiate. So things like deflection phrases and minimization techniques and offers of cooperation or paraphrasing, those things at this point, the officers want to stabilize this situation as quickly as possible. And that means securing the subjects, frisking for weapons based on their initial detention. And then we can begin to untangle what may or may not have happened. As a matter of fact, the young man on the, that you saw the very first video of, I believe in 12 minutes, he was ultimately released and sent on his, on his way because he had, he had cooperated with the police and were able to sort it out, determine he indeed was not involved. We're going to move on to, this is Sergeant Servantes' squad car video. This is a little bit of a fish eye sort of view. You'll be able to see this, this quite a bit that will happen in this particular viewpoint. You will see the officers in the distance over by, off, off to the left side there. You'll see the squad car pulled in for, who are dealing with the very first subject that we spoke, that we showed you. We will also be able to see Sergeant Servantes in this camera angle here. And you'll be able to see a real critical point with regards to his viewpoint when Ms. Lewis starts to walk away and where his eyeballs are when she turns and starts to come back. Because again, I think that's, that's important for some of this analysis.
Hands, keep your hands where I can see them. Get down on your knees, right now. Down on your knees. Get down on the ground. Get down on the ground, right now. Keep your hands away from your waist. Keep your hands away from your waist. Arms out to your side. Okay, put your arms out to your side. Thank you, both of you. Now, stand up for me now. Stand up for me. Keep your hands away from your waist. Keep your hands away from your waist. Stand up. You want a shot? I will shoot you, you understand? If you put your hands next to your waist again, you will be shot, do you understand?
So I meant to pause it right there to kind of explain that. I know it's sometimes that something like that, it's hard for people to hear or to understand. But just like I explained before, people are carrying guns on the street. Most of the time they're in their waist. And Sir, the officer, Officer Ruff in the, in the video is telling him, under no certain circumstances, keep your hands away from your waist because you pull something out of your waistband, you'll probably get shot. And that needs to be very clear for everybody who may have a gun.
Do you understand? If you put your hands next to your waist again, you will be shot, do you understand? Hands up, walk straight towards me. You put your hands to your waist, you will get shot, you understand? Walk towards me. Towards me. Towards me. Towards me. Keep walking. Towards me. Hey, pay attention. Okay, well, you need to let, do a stop because you're going to be shot.
You may have noticed as he walked back on his right leg, he sort of was walking a little bit funny. And we know from the, from the hindsight of this particular video, that indeed he did have a malfunction handgun that most likely started in his waistband and then slid down his right pant leg and was ultimately caught in the material with the cuff at the bottom of his right leg there. As a matter of fact, the material was so tightly cuffed, the officers had to lower his pants somewhat to reach down from the top in order to actually get the, the gun out of his, out of his, his leg there. Now again, the officer at this point are trying to stabilize this. They are now going to, at this particular point, they will bring Mr. Busby to the, back to the, the hood area of a second squad car and try to get that, to get him at least initially detained. And so that they now want to do the same thing with Ms. Lewis. They simply are going to want her to come back to, to, to them. It's at about this time that the YouTube video that many people have seen and referenced is starting from down near the apartments, if you will, south of this particular location. So what will happen here is Sergeant Servantes will have a decision to make when she begins to walk away, remembering that they're on a call for service of a shot fired and a subject injured. In the grand scheme of calls for service, at the top you might put active shooters at a school. This is right beneath that. This is an active shooter that was moments before the officers got there. But they don't know who has what. And that's why they're making some of these decisions. So we're going to go ahead and play this. I encourage you to watch off to the left as you'll be able to see Sergeant Servantes when he comes into the screen. And then you'll also see as Ms. Lewis is down the street, starts to turn to walk away after she told him she was leaving. She turned and she began to walk south. You will see Sergeant Servantes look back at the other officers to see if they're stabilized and secure enough. Because at this point, he's got a decision to make right then immediately. Do I let a potentially armed subject walk down the street? Or do I not take any action? And I think, we'll go ahead and watch this.
Well, you ain't finna walk home, you finna walk away, you finna go to jail.
So when Sergeant Servantes approaches Ms. Lewis, he, he basically tries soft hand or open hand controls at level three to put her in handcuffs. And you'll see her immediately spin and deliver an uppercut to Sergeant Servantes.
I also think it's important to note here that he starts to, he's getting ready to take off. As a matter of fact, remember, the last thing that he saw was her walking. When he initially comes, walking away, when he initially comes into the screen, you'll see him looking back to the other officers, are you okay? Or you got him or verbiage to that effect. He then starts to go at a fairly high rate. When he sees her, she stopped and she walked back. And he's committed at this point to, I'm out in front of that car now. I'm going to slow from running up on her to a quick paced walk. Because I think it is the best way to close the distance that he has to cover before she can reach or fire her gun that is in her waist. Fully understand that it's not in her hands. That's been brought up numerous times. Remember, he doesn't know if she's armed or not, and he just wants to simply use soft hands to quickly frisk, detain and frisk. And it, it does not quite turn out that way. You saw, you, you might have heard some of the language in the back from one of the other officers who was there, um, noting that there was a thirty-two, uh, which is a state police ten code gun. Uh, so they had at least discovered that gun in the pants and were conveying that information to those, uh, those three officers there. Um, I hope people could at least pick that up, and I, I suppose you can watch this as many times as you want online, but you can see that indeed Sergeant Cervantes, where he was looking when she stopped to, to walk back. And I also think it's important to note for the record that she had an immediate history of not necessarily complying with their, with, with their orders. Um, as a matter of fact, there's a car down the street there, there's a couple of the cars that are in the area, um, that were, despite Sergeant Cervantes' efforts, had, had come into sort of this, uh, the area where they were working. So, um, I think, I hope that, that shows a little bit more, um, about her initial reaction, as a matter of fact, if, if you, if you saw that she does, it looks like deliver an uppercut to Sergeant, uh, Cervantes, immediately as she spins out. Um, and it's at that point that he then tries to take her to the ground, that's, uh, usually a safer place for us to try and work. Lieutenant, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Well, I think you should saw from this video, you saw from last, this video and the last video, that when he did take her to the ground, so he broke his thumb and essentially became one-handed.
Um, at the next, at the next, um, slide, we will go into Officer Ruff's body camera. Um, a- as you go through this, you will indeed see, you'll, uh, you know it, we heard from Sergeant Cervantes that he recognized fairly quickly that he was one-handed in the fight. Um, and Officer Ruff comes up to, to help him. At this time, he's the only officer who's available. Um, you'll see Sergeant Corey Coker come down from the hill, um, I, I think we just, we just saw that in that, that fisheye camera. But there were seven Urbana Police units, eight total officers working that day. Um, one was a training car, so the one officer was riding with a field training officer. And you will see that ultimately seven units, eight officers, seven units, and all seven of them were involved in this particular incident at some point. Officer Ruff is the only one who's immediately available to help Sergeant Cervantes when he goes out to try to detain and frisk Ms. Lewis. And is, of course, has been pointed out already, um, with, i- in the other video, that he's had his, he does have his patrol rifle out. And so he's trying, he wants to maintain that, he just can't simply take it off his sling and lay it down on the street. Um, but there is no one else to go, so my, so Officer Ruff has to contain that or hold that rifle, make sure that that rifle is in a safer position as possible, and now he only has that one hand available. So essentially, we have two officers, two hands, instead of four officers and, um, forehands, so Lieutenant, anything else? Okay, and we will go ahead, um, and, and run this video, this one is fairly long, it's approximately nine, I think, nine minutes.
Three forty-sevens, out with four twenty-two.
Behind you. Get down on your knees, right now! Down on your Get down on the ground! Get down on the ground, right now! Keep your hands away from your waist! Keep your hands away from your waist! Arms out to your side! Okay. Okay, put your arms out to your side! Thank you, both of you. Well yeah, we'll do the mail first. Mail, stand up for me now. Stand up for me. Keep your hands away from your waist! Keep your hands away from your waist! Stand up! Keep, you wanna get shot? I will shoot you, do you understand? If you put your hands next to your waist again, you will be shot, do you understand?
Again, it's, you know, it's bold language, it's direct language, but it's, what has to be used to get the point across, so it's nice and clear, and, and the person understands what, what the consequences are.
Hands up, walk straight towards me! You put your hands to your waist, you will get shot, do you understand? Okay, walk towards me! Towards me! Towards me!
Over here, towards us.
Towards me! Keep walking. Towards me!
Over here!
This, hey, pay attention! Okay, well you need to listen to instructions, you're gonna get shot! You guys? You're being detained right now, we tried to explain to you, but you guys are not listening. You got one detained. Just keep eyes on her, Sergeant.
So what would typically happen here is they would, they would, um, truss, uh, Mr. Busby, secure him, put him in the car, and then they would call Ms. Lewis back and do the same thing, uh, in a perfect world.
Yeah. Twenty-five, come up here.
Stop resisting, stop resisting, not now! Stop resisting! Stop resisting! Here, I got it, you got it.
Basically, that grabbed me for no reason.
Stop resisting!
Put your hand behind your back.
Stop resisting!
I got it. Get out. Well, you don't approach us, we got guns to set up.
You are nobody's woman, bitch! You're just like me, bitch, literally!
You act like a lady, you're not, right now. I got three forty-seven, we've got one more to say.
So one of the things that she was, um, interacting with Sergeant Cervantes, you'll hear a lot of discussion regarding, um, being stopped, I think it was because of what somebody said. And indeed, with, there was a, a, and, and that she somewhat corrected that, and that there was a call to the, to nine-one-one, there was a report of a shot fired, there was a description given. As a matter of fact, this is not an anonymous report, this is actually a report with a named, uh, reporting party. Someone's provided their name, and those tips and calls that come in, if someone does it anonymously, um, uh, there's a certain weight they're given, if people give their name, uh, and where they live, those tips are given more credence, because if they're giving false information, there's potentially some recourse there. So I just wanted to point that, that they're given details, and these officers will respond to that, because there's a lot of discussion by Ms. Lewis when it, when it, when it goes to that. Uh, at this point, I'm going to let, um, Lieutenant Norton speak a little bit about, uh, a couple of the techniques that were used, um, in, in what you just witnessed there.
So, uh, Officer Ruff used what is typically known as a distraction technique or a stunning technique, and what, what his target area was the brachial nerve bundle behind the ear of Ms. Lewis. Uh, a- and, and what those essentially are, uh, designed to do are weaken the subject's resistance by changing their, their thought process. Uh, basically, a, a brick stake to short circuit the response mechanism, uh, to, to make somebody flinch. So while they're concentrating on, uh, one thing, we distract them with another to help get them into some kind of control hold, I think they had little effect in this circumstance. Um, but that was the goal, and that was the intent, is these type of techniques are taught nationwide, they're not anything new. And keep in mind, she's at a level four right now, uh, fighting with a police officer, so those techniques, uh, and even, uh, different, or, or, or more, uh, strikes, or, you know, uh, are, are, you know, they're authorized. Uh, what, what Officer Ruff used were, were small distraction strikes, an attempt to get Ms. Lewis to comply, so he could, in fact, uh, get her in handcuffs.
A- as a matter of fact, esp- uh, y- you can hear them done in conjunction with the command to stop. So these weren't done out of a, um, any position, uh, other than, um, to get her to comply. Uh, I've probably watched this, these videos more than most. Um, and that, uh, her left hand continues to reach down and under her body throughout the course of the, the interaction at various times, and they really do struggle with that, and then that's partly because of Sergeant Cervantes on the, on, on that side of her body is, only has one hand, uh, to, to try and work with. Um, Lieutenant, would you, I guess, speak a little bit with regards to the, to the legs, please, sir?
So, what's gonna happen next, and what you'll see next, is, uh, Sergeant Cervantes will, uh, get off of Ms. Lewis, Sergeant Coker already has. Officer Ruff will cross Ms. Lewis's legs and bend them up towards her buttocks, and that essentially, uh, you know, uh, straightens out the hamstring muscle, or the, the thigh muscles, and makes her legs a little bit weaker. Um, you'll also see her, she'll, she'll start grabbing at things on his waist, like he has his ammunition there, uh, sidearm on his side, and other things on his waistband, and we don't want people to grab a hold of, so he actually pulls her arms up over her back, you know, the body has a natural resistance, and he goes to where that natural resistance is, he's not hurting her. Uh, some people are more flexible than others, uh, and she's, she's very flexible, so her hands go a little bit higher than most, but it's not, it's not hurting her, it's keeping her pinned to the ground until I get another, uh, vehicle there to put her in. So what you see Officer Ruff doing right there, he checked the handcuffs for proper fitness, and, uh, he's double locking them so they don't tighten up regardless of how much activity happens, the handcuffs won't, won't tighten up after they're double locked.
You're hurting me!
No. Stop grabbing! Stop grabbing!
No, I'm hurting you, fuck me!
Okay.
Let me go!
I don't want to hurt you! No, you're not gonna be grabbed! Camera's on the whole time.
Let my arm go!
No.
Let my arm go!
Just relax, ma'am, okay? She can breathe.
He punched me in my stomach, and I'm a whole female, he's not even supposed to be touching me because there's low females on site! Focus, you talking! My name is Lili Elwes!
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm getting my O.G. back at the courthouse, so you
Okay. Okay. Okay, we tried to explain what's going on, ma'am.
Well, let me the fuck go, you ain't trying to play shit! Because first of all, you had shit went on the back!
Okay, okay, that's the thing. We tried, we tried!
You want me to calm the fuck down, and I'm a grown ass woman!
No, I never said that.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. And your body cam is gonna show that shit.
Body cam will show everything, that's correct, ma'am.
Now, let me the fuck go!
If I can, you know, if you're helping me get the Just a second, okay?
Mm, let him go, it's tight on my fucking wrist!
Don't pull against them, ma'am, they're not gonna apply pressure.
Bro, let me the fuck go!
All right, stand up, please. Okay, all right, we're gonna walk to the car. Man, yeah, you will.
Fuck that, do you get my fucking phone?
We're gonna get your stuff! No, it's not how that works.
So, um, Ms. Lewis will begin asking for a phone. Um, there is property left, as a matter of fact, uh, I think her flip flops, her pair of flip flops are out, uh, on the, uh, on the street there. Officers do get them once they get her detained, uh, in the car, which is, uh, a little more difficult to think than maybe they were expecting. Um, but there is, and there were no fu- there was not a phone in her property there, and as a matter of fact, as officers have retraced steps earlier, they did not find a phone out either. So.
Bro, give me my shit!
Relax, relax! Okay, relax! Why are you doing this? We do not want to hurt you!
Because this came upon us for no fucking reason!
Have a seat.
That's why!
Have a seat first.
So obviously, what you saw there was when she spit on, on both officers here, um, and then, and we'll see this a little bit better in another video, in, in a, a bit later here from Officer, uh, Rich. Uh, but right now, that's, that's the spit, and you ultimately see them put on a spit hood, Lieutenant Norton, do you mind explaining a spit hood?
So a spit hood is just a mesh, uh, mesh hood, like a mosquito netting hood. Uh, it doesn't restrict any kind of breathing, doesn't tighten up around the neck, it's just to put on somebody's head so they don't continuously spit on other people or the officers. What you're also gonna see is she'll, she'll, uh, keep kicking either the doors or the officers, so they're gonna put what's called a hobble on her to restrain her legs from kicking, uh, and as well as the seatbelt to try to keep her in place in the backseat of the car.
And the hobble, there's a couple of things, it protects her legs, it protects the cars from getting all beat up in it, this protects any, anyone who's in the, uh, any officer in the area.
I got three forty-seven, we got the spit hood in back of the car.
Stay here! Let's see how this can work when you break my fucking arm! I'm relaxed, get to sit on my fucking face!
Wash them off!
You spit on us? Shut the door. You can hobble out.
Get her out that way.
Give me my phone, no! Give me my phone, no! Give me my phone, that's all I want! You ain't even getting a stretchy one of those still boys! The fuck I'm a whole female, bitch, and you're having me fucking on the wrong ass, bitch!
Relax, please, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you lucky bitch! You fell, eh? You fell, eh?
Oh, here you go. Make it five, there you go. I don't know where the door is.
No. Just put, put this down. I can't, my fucking thumb, don't do it.
Make that three forty-seven.
Marked on the female, you can use in a spit hood and in a hobble. Please, the county jail, no, she's combative.
Um, I want to point out a couple of things, you can hear Officer Ruff did this a couple of different times where he's tried to, he's made a note over the year to the radio dispatcher, um, so that they can mark certain times down on the, on the dispatch ticket. None of these things are done and tried to secret and tried to hide that. Um, the, the hood and the hobble and the detention are, are things that we, um, have actually put onto the, uh, onto the, uh, the dispatch ticket. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna take a second here with regards to the dispatch ticket, the timestamps on some of the dispatch ticket, although some, that's some discussion regarding time. Um, and without, I guess, regards to the exact seconds, but for purposes of this presentation, the call came in at four thirty-four P M. on Friday. At four thirty-six P M., it was marked as dispatched. At four forty P M., the officers began to arrive. At four forty-two, Mr. Busby was marked as detained. And at four forty-four, Ms. Lewis was marked as detained. So from the call to Ms. Lewis being detained, um, that was, that was ten minutes. So I, I wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear for the record. Um, so at this point, we're gonna transition over now to Officer Raymond Rich. Officer Rich's body camera here, and this is as he's pulling up to assist um, with uh, Ms. Lewis.
Fuck, go.
Alright, stand up, please. Man, yeah.
Where's my phone? Fuck that, get your fucking gun.
We're gonna get your stuff.
You must sit down, what the fuck?
No, it's not how that works. Hey, relax.
Stop kicking.
Why are you doing this? We do not wanna hurt you.
Cause you just came upon us for no fucking reason. That's why.
Have a seat.
That's why. Look, I'm a fuck.
Quit. Yeah, back door, driver's door.
Let my arm go, you fucking motherfucker, oh.
I'm breaking your arm. You just spit, you're gonna sit right like that.
Fuck you when I say no face again, bitch.
Stay here. Stick, just.
Let's see, I'll be handcuffed when you break my fucking arm. That's the case, oh no.
Down, stick.
I'm relaxed, get the shit out of my fucking face, first of all.
No, you spit on us? Shut the door. Get her out that way.
Give me my phone, that's all I want, give me my fucking phone. Give me my phone, no.
Here you go.
Give me my phone, no. Give me my phone, that's all I want. Fuck, I'm a whole female bitch and you're handling me like I'm a grown ass bitch.
Make it fine, there you go. There's a round impact on that eleven oh two, first story. She's back, actually. She's fine, I mean, she can go. You wanna go on right now? She can go, yeah. You got the phone?
So in, in, in this particular um, piece of footage, you saw her spit on the officers. Uh, Officer Rich was then able to push her over to stop that behavior. Um, matter of fact, she complained about her arm and he uh, 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 actually repositioned her right hand. Um, and then she went to kick the officers. After the third kick, they finally decided that it was time to hobble Ms. Lewis. I also don't wanna lose sight of the fact that at this point, they still have a shooting to investigate. Um, they still have other work to do this night. This is just, had, had, had this gone a little smoother, we wouldn't have had to have all this. Before the uh, we, they could focus their efforts on that uh, that, that shooting investigation. Uh, and, and yes, her flip flops were picked up and there, there was, there was not a phone there. The um, the next morning at about eight thirty in the morning. Officer Rich, um, the, the same officer was back on duty. Um, for his Saturday twelve hour shift. And he went back out to speak with Ms. Lewis. He had another matter to discuss with her. We wanna show you three pieces of that investigation which aren't, which aren't relevant to this particular event. Um, and, and you'll clearly see, we've, we've, we've marked them. You'll see some black um, spacing in between. There's essentially three sections. You'll see two pieces of, of black timing to separate the videos. But I'd like for you to listen. This is Ms. Lewis, the um, the next morning. And it's about eight thirty in the morning. This is at the Champagne County Satellite Jail.
There's an officer there.
Huh?
Is he the person I hit last night? You have a-
So are you the officer? Are you the person I hit last night? That was the first thing she said to Officer Rich when he uh, met her at, at the jail. This is now other footage taken from, uh, this is a length, more lengthy section taken from their conversation.
Word of that last night?
Yes, I had the one that brought you here.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I transported you here.
What happened? I don't know, I did, I don't know. I woke up in a, up in the room like, what the fuck, what?
Well. Apparently you guys got in an argument or something and never took it down. And you didn't comply and you fought us and you kicked us and you spit on us.
Was there a gun?
Yeah. You didn't have a gun, but. Sure, yeah. It was a big deal. You could've got very hurt. Where were you on?
I took a Danix edible.
Marijuana and Danix?
I don't know. It just said it was brown and-
I'm just curious, that's all.
Dance, that's what I-
X A, edible. I'm just curious, did you have some ridiculous strength?
I'm just shocked, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have my house keys. Who's that coming in with?
Um, I don't know. It was a shit show. We were lucky to get you here.
Oh boy, am I crazy?
Yeah. Alright, it happened. Don't do Dan and Dan edible. Alright. As you can see, she's a completely different person the next day. Having a pleasant conversation with the, the same officer. When she was kicking the, the day before. Um, I, I, I think at this point, we're going to um, go through a couple more of the, the photos with regards to the um, investigation. Uh, they had to go on after the officers got her out to the jail that Friday night.
Yeah, okay. So what you see here is, is ten oh three Colorado. This is where uh, Ms. Lewis and Mr. Busby came from. This is where we assume this, this all started. Uh, eleven oh two Colorado is the building where the brown, uh, the apartment where the brown impacted. Um, this is the exterior apartment. The apartment's actually right here. Uh, the window is here. You'll see a little piece of the, the uh, blind that's missing. See up here in this corner, here's the hole through and even closer, here's the hole through in apartment one oh two. Inside one oh two, apartment one oh two, looking out, um, you'll notice that uh, is the officers where you can kind of barely see the apartment ten oh three right down there. Uh, but this is the officers as they were doing their investigation. The outside view across that, you'll see the bullet hole that impacted across uh, the room. Keep in mind, this was an occupied apartment. Um, we took a piece of the drywall out. You see it uh, went through the drywall, impacted into the wood. And then we presumed fell to the bottom of this uh, interior of this wall and didn't proceed into any other rooms, thank God. This is the loaded pistol that was recovered from the pant leg of Mr. Busby. Uh, it had um, ammo in the magazine. It was malfunction evidently. Mr. Busby, Busby didn't know how to clear it. Uh, clear the malfunction, uh, as you know, there, there could've been more of a danger. There could've been more rounds shot from the gun. We don't know, but we, we, we feel we're lucky that the gun malfunctioned. This is Sergeant Cervantes. He uh, obviously has this uh, wound here and also a broken thumb and will not be back to work anytime soon.
I've got um, some more uh, a couple more things that I wanna, I'd like to point out here. Um, with regards to the uh, this, the, the steps of review that, that do happen here. Um, when officers use force, um, and uh, I guess, Jared, do you mind if we, can I finish up with this or did you have, is that good? Okay. Um, when officers use force, we, I'll back up. We use, and I think the mayor might have said this in the last week or so. We go on about twenty-five thousand calls for service. Excuse me, calls for service per year. We use force anywhere between one hundred and one hundred and fifty times. When one of those events occurs, um, a sergeant does an initial review right away, an uninvolved sergeant. That night Sergeant Cortez Gardner came in, uh, did an initial review to see if there was any glaring issues or problems. Um, as a matter of fact, he wants to make sure the reports are done. He wants to look at some video. Um, as a matter of fact, we also want to interview the subject on whom the force was used. Sergeant Gardner tried to do that on Friday night. Uh, but Ms. uh, Lewis was still, uh, I think in a state of mind similar to what you had seen her interacting with the police earlier. Um, and was in no position to provide any sort of statement to the police. Um, that the best uh, information we got from her, but really was with Officer Rich the next morning, which is why we've included it here. In addition to the, in, in the police report. When these things were brought up, this event obviously caused some social media outcry. Uh, and on that Friday, uh, Friday night initially, um, I was aware that an incident occurred. And then we began to hear more on Saturday morning. So then uh, I came in, a couple of members of our command staff came in. Um, and, and tried to uh, review as much as we could. We read out your police report that had been written. We had watched several pieces of, of this video and had to get to a certain comfort level with what had happened. Does that mean that there couldn't be different ways to do this? No, I, as a, as a field training officer, there's wrong or different. It's a uh, continual message that we, we, we consider. But in this case, we had to consider whether it was, again, within policy and or within, within the law. Those were the discussions that we had that day. Um, something else that has come up many, a few times, I guess at least, had to do with the press release that was pushed out. Police understand that that's an attempt to summarize police reports. That's an attempt to summarize information gathered from squad car video. Attempt to summarize body cam video and somehow try to package it in something that's relatively uh, short. Um, two pages for a press release is actually rather lengthy. Traditionally, our press releases are around a page. So we did feel this deserved more context, more information than we normally would um, share. In, in addition to administration reviewing, um, there's a use of force review board, use of force committee. Sometimes you'll hear it. Made up of officers and yes, they are indeed here from the Urbana Police Department. There would be sergeants, guys come from firearms backgrounds, defensive tech backgrounds or um, detectives or patrol officers. So there's a, hopefully lots of different perspectives that make up the um, use of force review board. They do then review it and compare the actions that they've seen and that they've read about. Um, with the policies um, that the department has. Um, I believe the mayor spoke of that and I think that their, their report, typically we do these quarterly, but due to the, the, because this event had, has caused some um, concern. We had them move up and have a, make a concerted effort to try to get this done as quickly as they could. And their, their final report was issued um, late this afternoon and it was forwarded to council. I will, I will just say, and, and cutting to the chase here, um, although there's multiple paragraphs explaining things. In the conclusion, the use of force review board determined the officer's actions were within department policy and procedure. And again, I, I, I know there, I'm sure there are people that are shaking their head right now. But I encourage you to, in light of all the information you've just watched, to like, to actually read through the, the document and we will, we will make that uh, available as well. Finally, um, the State's Attorney's Office has agreed to review this matter. Uh, to ensure that the officer's behavior was appropriate under the law. Um, and I can't necessarily speak for Julie Reese's timeframe. Um, but uh, she has, um, she has been made aware of this and has seen um, videos and, and watched the uh, the police reports. I wanna make a couple of other comments here. Um, because there has been a lot of discussion with regards to this and um, investigations and, and other entities doing things. For those who've been on council for a little while, you may have heard the presentation that uh, um, that had been given with regards to the Champagne County uh, multi jurisdictional investigative team. That's a team of detectives from neighboring agencies, not from the affected agency, but from neighboring agencies who come and investigate incidents. Um, under the supervision of the Illinois State Police. To look into matters of uh, uses of, serious uses of force. That is force likely to cause death or great bodily harm. That team also works on in custody death um, cases. This event did not rise to that level. As such, we use our internal mechanisms to ensure that things were done within policy. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, I am not aware of any injuries suffered by uh, Aaliyah as, as, as a result of this encounter. Um, I, I, I think I want to, at least at this point, let Lieutenant Norton speak to a point um, that he's made as we've talked about this. Before with regards to the behavior of the officers through, throughout this uh, event.
Yeah, and if you, as you watch the video and you may watch it all again, uh, you can see the professionalism of our officers. None of those officers uh, took anything personal that Ms. Lewis did. When she spit on him, when she kicked him, when she hit him, when she threw him an uppercut. Um, matter of fact, the only cussing you heard was when Sergeant Cervantes broke his thumb, understandably. Uh, there was a lot of maams and pleases and thank you and, and you know, Sergeant Corey Kilker, uh, when he talked to the J U V on the hill, explained everything very eloquently. Uh, when, when you know, Mike or Sergeant Cervantes was trying to speak with them originally, you know, trying to explain anything was going on. So uh, you, you'll see throughout this, even all the way to, till they get to the jail and the, the next day. Very, very professional, um, and never took anything personal. I think that's, that's to be noted because I, I challenged a lot of people when they're spit on or kicked to stay professional and, and this department and these officers did that. And, and uh, they deserve that recognition.
Um, I guess the last couple of points I wanted to make that, uh, I wanted to make it clear. I know that the State's Attorney's Office is the one who charges cases, not the city of Urbana or the police chief. The Champagne County State's Attorney makes charging decisions with regards to crimes occurring within this, in, within our county. Um, I, I, I guess I will try to close this um, with regards to uh, I- I, I guess I will try to close this with regards to, again, and I had mentioned this briefly before. Something that I learned from Bruce Stockloff, one of our, who's taught lots of police officers field training. And one of the points that he drives home is, is, is the behavior wrong or different? And that's sort of the, one of the guiding principles when I have to review these particular matters. Is it exactly what I would do? There's sixty officers, there might be sixty different sort of recipes to try to make that. We give officers principles and we give them guidelines, but they sometimes have to make decisions in a split second. And there's no better decision, there's no better example of that than Sergeant Chivante's at the front of that car. I understand why people have said certain things, but I want, the people who look at this and analyze this need to understand that he had a short, short amount of time to decide what he needed to do, to do there. So again, the questions are, was the behavior within policy? And to that I would answer yes. And was the officer's behavior legal? And to that I would answer yes. But of course, that will be pending further review by the state's attorney's office. So I, I think at this point, we will unshare the screen, I believe, and we'll take some questions from council.
Thank you, Chief. I do want to tell people, I, I'm having two computers going, so the camera that is pointing toward me and the audio is coming from one. But the camera, the screen that I actually can see you all on is a different screen. So if I look like I'm not pointing in the right direction, I'm probably not, but I can hear and see everything. Are there any questions for Chief? And I'll see if I can get everybody, okay. From council members, do you have any questions?
I think Jared was first.
Jared, go ahead.
One comment before my first question, I'm sure other folks will have some as well. Chief, I don't know. You probably have no idea how to see what we see on our end and I don't know how everyone else got to see those videos. But when we watched them in our briefing, obviously I made a comment about how unusual I thought it was that those body cameras could pick up almost everything that Aleah Lewis was saying. And in the stream, I've got high frequency broadband and pretty good internet at my house. I couldn't hear anything she was saying in almost any of the videos except for portions of where she was screaming. They cut in and out a lot and I know when we watch them, it's continuous clean footage. So I don't know if we need to consider uploading your presentation independently. But I'm pretty sure that what's going to be viewable through this UPTV recording is not going to be very representative of what we were able, what we were able to see. So I just want to make, I don't know what everybody else's experience was with that. Other council members can comment if they were able to see the fluid video or not. Large portions of it, I could only see one out of every ten frames, you know, the image would change every five seconds or so. And I couldn't hear mu- much at all of the audio that was, that was going on. So you guys could probably see and hear it just fine on your computer there, but us at home couldn't. And I'm sure a lot of the general public couldn't as well. So what, that was just one comment. My initial question is about the domestic violence issue between Ms. Lewis and Kamarian. And has there been any charges pressed by her or is there an investigation ongoing into the nature of the incident that led to them leaving the apartment and him firing the weapon outside the apartment?
Is Julia Reitz still in the meeting? Doesn't appear to be.
Since, since she's not here or signed out or is having technical difficulties, all these statements, we're not able to hear any statements from either Mr. Busby or Ms. Lewis that would support domestic violence between them. I know that he had had some discussion with a proud female friend that had gotten him, it's to some degree irritated. I think as we had said before, I know that there was a canvas of that neighbor, of the her apartment complex where the officers had been, while they were trying to initiate or conclude their investigation. So that was the apartment in the beginning of ten oh three East Colorado, there was a casing found out front there. And there clearly was a, some disheveling of their apartment, there was a lamp over and some food strewn about. But we've not gathered any information that would lead to charges that I'm aware of for any kind of domestic violence in their relationship.
Jared, I called the state's attorney this morning and asked specifically about that because people have assumed that there was domestic, it was a domestic violent event that led to all this. And she said that based on the statements they've obtained in the investigation and also independent witness statements during the investigation. There's no evidence to support the assumption of domestic violence. There apparently was an argument in the apartment about a phone, about a cell phone. But the charges in this case are one unlawful discharge of a firearm, felon in possession of a firearm, reckless discharge of a firearm, and that's for Mr. Busby. And for Ms. Lewis, it was three counts of aggravated battery to a police officer, scratching, kicking and spitting. One count of felony resisting a police officer for the broken thumb. But there again, was not enough evidence or not evidence to support the contention that domestic violence was a factor here. There was an argument, however.
Good, thanks.
Did you have any more questions?
I'll save my other ones.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, thanks, I have a few questions. I'll ask one or two and then give other people a chance. First, I did have a question from a constituent about the video that was shown, since our charge is being against Ms. Lewis. Were, were she, did she provide a release or did her attorney provide a release for us to show those videos?
No, that, that is a, that's a consideration by the state's attorney and we did review all of this with the state's attorney with Ms. Reitz prior to showing this.
Okay. And then as far as the investigation process of the use of force. You explain the sergeant reviews immediately and there's a hundred, a hundred fifty a year. And then some portion of those go on to the use of force committee or do all of those get reviewed? You said this one was special, it was moved up, but normally a quarterly basis. Would all, all one hundred, a hundred fifty a year go through both of those steps?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'll let Lieutenant Norton speak to that because he actually supervised that committee.
So the one hundred and one hundred and fifty number, they're all reviewed from the use of, by the use of force committee. If you remember, the use of force continuing, continuing, starting at level two all the way up to the top. They all get reviewed first by sergeant who would go out and take initial statements, collect initial evidence. And then the committee quarterly, they would review whatever use of force reports were taken in that quarter. So in the end of the year, roughly a hundred, a hundred fifty, yeah, they all have get reviewed by the use of force committee.
Okay, and then of those, I, you know, I, I read through it earlier, we got, got it kind of late. I don't remember exactly what it said, but basically said everything was conceivably justifiable under conditions, basically words of those fact, that effect. Of all those that are the hundred, a hundred fifty a year. How many of those say something else? And what, what are the other options? What are the other possibilities now it comes from those committees, from that committee?
So you're asking what, besides within policy and within, within the law, you're asking how many of those one fifty are not found that way?
Well, yeah, how many of those have different results basically? And, and are there different levels, like it may not be, may not, hopefully it isn't illegal or it would probably be prosecuted. Or a claim or something. If it's against policy, what happens? And is there anything at a, at a lower level than against policy where there's a recommendation or something else?
Yeah, I would say, I would say frequently that, well, I wouldn't say frequently, but a, a lot of the times when they, they find something that needs addressed, it's mostly a training issue. So they find, one of their, one of their things they need to look for are patterns. You know, are people doing this when this tech, technique would work better here and suggest training issues or training, I guess techniques or whatever to, to the control tactics committee. But you know, those are different things that, that they look for as well. They don't, they don't just look for, is it within policy? It's how can they improve the response and quality of officer at the police department?
Okay, and then I'll just talk about one more thing and then other people. On the de-escalation, that's come up quite a bit and that was one of the focus of several of the letters I received. I know, and investment de-escalation techniques and training has got to be a big payoff. And I know there's special circumstances you feel in this situation where there were urgent things to take care of and maybe not as much attention could have been given to de-escalation as normal. But if there had been some kind of heroic effort that had been successful, obviously we, we wouldn't be here tonight. You know, we, we wouldn't have an officer out for weeks and weeks with a broken thumb and potentially, you know. I, I had a broken thumb and I, I'm sure that Officer Chivante's is thinking daily about what he could have done differently where, you know, he wouldn't end up like that. What, I know we do some training and not everybody gets to crisis intervention training. I know he didn't have that. And we also do a lot of training with firearm weapons and, and regular training, weekly or monthly, and they have some kind of certification. So my question that I'm getting to is, is there such a thing as an annual certification for de-escalation techniques? Is there any court sort of reinforcing training like they get with weapons training? Other than just say the, you know, the one time the judo, verbal judo or whatever you called it, the one day training. What kind of ongoing de-escalation training and reinforcement is there?
So a couple of things. Number one, all the officers here go through eight hours of mental health training. So there's a crisis intervention team training, a CIP, that's a forty hour course. And that is one that is rather involved. All of the officers go to a sort of a trimmed down version in eight hours of, of mental health training. In addition, we do ongoing training, as a matter of fact. Sergeant Corey Cooper, the guy at the, at the top who dealt with that young man at the very beginning. Is one of our instructors for, and I forget the exact name, it's somewhere, it's not verbal judo anymore, it's verbal persuasion and influence. And it's a kind of a, a, a training that's given to a variety of people, those in customer service, not even just police. So those, those techniques and some of those things that I, that I spoke of a little bit in the beginning with regards to some of the, those persuasive techniques. Those are things that he teaches, we'll use videos for some of those things as well to help illustrate some of, some of the points. I, I do want to circle back around with regards to your initial comments that and I had replied to this and some of this is, has come back. So evidently when the email that I sent out, it admitted to be on just the one person I sent it to. But I think this might be important here. Given the circumstances involving, and this was, I'm sorry, this was about the de-escalation. Given the circumstances involving a potentially armed subject of a large open environment direct commands given to which she did not comply. The escalation negotiation tactics are usually secondary when such a high risk to public safety exists. Had she been contained in a room or appeared in a courtyard, we could have taken more time and employed the escalation, the escalation techniques such as deflection phrases or paraphrasing. Our number one goal in a highly volatile situation like this is simply to secure, see.
Okay, thank you very much and I really appreciate your effort to be transparent in all this.
Before I call on Sharice, I just was notified, state's attorney Julia Reitz is back on call. So if you have questions for her regarding charges, she'd be happy to answer those. So Sharice and then Dennis.
Okay, what I guess my question is, were there any injuries to Ms. Lewis? And what were they, if, if she had any injuries at all?
I am not aware of any injuries to Ms. Lewis. I can only imagine, I assume she must have a few scrapes or abrasions on her hands. She compared to, having watched this, but I'm not aware of any issues with regards to injuries for Ms. Lewis.
Also, could you give me, and probably the, 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 the public that'll be watching this. The definition and the understanding of the fact, the fact that resisting in and of itself is a violation.
No, I don't know that I can quote the, the law to you verbatim right here now, but the, when they're giving lawful commands. A citizen has to obey the lawful commands. He gave her numerous commands, as I said, I, I think at the point that she begins to walk away, even at the point that she then pulls out of his initial grasp. That would technically be the violation of resisting slash obstructing a peace officer.
Okay, so, so if, for example, if I'm stopped by the police. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If, if I'm stopped by the police and the officer asks me to get out of the car and I refuse to get out of the car. At that moment, can he then say that I am being resisting, that I'm resisting?
Yes.
Okay, and at that time, he can also put me in handcuffs and pat me down and so on and so forth?
That's correct. Well, if, if there's an arrest in the, in the situation, you know, the description you just gave, yes, you would be, you could be placed under arrest. And when we arrest someone, a search of that person incident to that arrest is then allowed in the United States.
So it's better when a police officer stops you for you to just follow directions?
It, it does clearly make our lives much easier, yes.
Okay. For Ms. Wright, is she, the, the question I have for her, Ms. Ju- Ms. Julie, I don't know if I'm saying your name right. If is there any way or or it, will there be any type of diminishing of the charges brought against Ms. Lewis?
So, can you, can you all hear me, Ms. Hershey? Okay, so generally, yeah. Yes, can, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so generally speaking, this is an ongoing criminal case and I don't really want to talk about what the result of it might be. But what I can tell you is that at this point, Mr. Busby is charged with weapons offenses, aggravated discharge of a firearm, reckless discharge of a firearm, unlawful possession of a firearm by a felon. And Ms. Lewis is charged with three counts of aggravated battery to a peace officer for kicking the officer, for scratching the officer and for spitting on the officer and aggravated resisting a peace officer for resisting the lawful actions of a police officer and causing injury to that officer, that being Officer Chivante's thumb. Those are charges that are appropriate under the evidence as we have reviewed it and we plan on proceeding with those charges.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. For the record, I did not hear that response. I'm not sure why. Any other questions, Sharice?
No.
Okay, I think Eric has his hand up and then Mary Alice, sorry, oh, sorry Dennis, we'll just go down the line. Go ahead, Eric.
So my question is, and I guess this is directed towards Ms. Reitz also. What are the implications of this act occurring under the influence of drugs? In other words. Is it appropriate, I, well, okay, I don't want you to say how you're going to dispose of it, but just in the abstract. If a crime is committed and it's drug influenced. Is that sometimes appropriate for diversion to drug? is that sometimes appropriate for diversion to drug court? Uh, will will that play a role in how this goes forward?
Certainly, substance abuse and addiction issues are ones that we want to address um, and have to address oftentimes through the criminal justice system. Um, I can tell you in this situation that um, Ms. Lewis has a long history and that um, substance abuse issues are ones that need to be addressed and drug court might be an appropriate resolution of this case. A lot of that is up to her and her counsel and are things that we'll be discussing as we go forward. Um, but certainly, uh, within the criminal justice system, we put um, a lot of effort into trying to find the proper resolution that addresses the underlying issues and gives people an opportunity to move forward as productive citizens if they're willing to do that. So so yes, that that could be an option in this case. No one's saying anything, so I'm not sure if everybody.
I I'm completely happy with your with your response. I have no further questions.
Okay, um, Dennis and then Mary Alice.
Dennis, you're muted.
Thank you. Yeah, Eric's question pretty much covered a lot of what I was wondering about. Um, I guess what I was wondering also was that uh, um, the officers could probably tell if they had any training that these people were not acting completely rationally, that there might have been an possibility that there's um, that they were uh, well, they're obviously unfocused. The gentleman obviously walked in kind of a daze to the to the patrol car and was um, even unable to sort of aim himself correctly. And then the woman was um, um, you could say verbally hyperventilating and acting um, very agitated. So I wondered if there was any recognition by the officers in subsequent comments that you've received from them as you explored the case, that they were aware that these subjects might not be in their normal rational state when they were interacting with them. And did that influence the choices of way, the ways in which they tried to interact? I guess that's to for our police chief.
Um, so yeah, I've read through all of these reports, um, and there's referencing them regarding some of their picking up on some of those cues. I don't know that I can speak exactly, um, Mr. Roberts, with regards to um, how that influenced uh, all of their decisions. I will tell you that they gave numerous commands repeatedly, and I think you've you've watched this and I, again, I I'm sorry that the uh, for our viewers at home, we have a few technical difficulties and we'll figure out how to get those videos um, up for people to see. Um, but indeed, the, I I think the the repetition um, is one of those that I do believe indicated or helped to show that they were um, at least cognizant of some of these issues.
And then in the, when um, the subjects were, um, when Mrs. Lewis in particular was um, entered at the uh, at the jail in that evening, did they try to do any kind of evaluation of a medical test to find out whether there were traces of uh, substance abuse in her body that might support it beyond the fact that in the next day she talked about it personally?
Uh, I I am not aware of any sort of uh, biological tests or anything they would have done to confirm um, what she stated the 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 next day. I know there's a a a medical intake that they do. Um, uh, but I don't know that I've, I I'm not aware they did any sort of chemical testing.
All right, I see. I guess I was wondering because um, I mean, there might have been a question of whether she was injured even perhaps, so I don't know. You know, at what level they make the inquiry when the person comes in originally to in against.
They they do do a medical intake um, form and they will go down and and have certain discussions. I know that um, I don't know when they would have done exactly hers. Um, I don't know Lieutenant, if you know, um, I know she was uh, uncooperative upon arrival at the jail. Um, and uh, so I don't know what point in the evening they would have actually been up complete all their booking process.
And my last question is sort of about the the gunshot that was the original cause for the um, call. Uh, and obviously it seemed to be that the officers were immediately responding to just the detainment and that became a huge project and the actual um, discharge and the tracing of the slug in the apartment that uh, on Colorado Avenue uh, didn't occur till the next day. And I was sort of wondering if um, what uh, interaction there has been or as far as the significance of the thought shot being fired and um, landing in a per- in a person's apartment. I mean, is there are charges about battery and and uh, um, a sailing of of a random shot also going to be faced by these people?
Well, the um, so I I the investigation occurred that at that same afternoon.
It did.
That that did not. So the the interview of her occurred the following morning. But the officers going to um, the affected apartment eleven oh two East Colorado, that occurred that night. Those photos and stuff were taken that particular night. Um, the efforts at the apartment complex where the casing was recovered occurred that night. The canvassing efforts um, occurred that night. As a matter of fact, the initial, the the charges that the uh, Julia Reese just spoke of were indeed for, I believe, aggravated discharge and reckless discharge of the firearm by Mr. Busby and I was um, and so those all, that that all occurred that uh, that those are those, those things happened that night, that afternoon.
Well, I guess I look forward to hearing um, further evaluation of the events and also of the review of uh, the actions of our police department by Julia Reitz as the um, independent investigator. I know that a lot of people are very concerned that um, proper procedures happen here. But I do appreciate the fact that the, we were all called in midweek to observe and watch these videos uh, in pairs so that we could have a better understanding of what uh, was fate, we were facing as city council members and representing the community from the the point of view is that we also are um, you know, we support, we support the uh, uh, you know, the the privacy and the and the safety of the of the each individual as they interact with the police and we try to understand you know, and whereas we're explaining tonight exactly what the challenges were. So I appreciate the fact that we are, we had the opportunity to come in and and view that early. That's it.
You're welcome.
Mary Alice.
Um, well, a lot of my questions have already been answered, so thank you, everyone. My first one that I want to talk a little bit about is Jared had mentioned that the video is difficult to see, it was very uh, jerky, so to speak. So um, Chief, I'm wondering, I think one of the largest concerns that people have right now is due to the actions of the police on their initial interaction with Ms. Lewis um, led to a cascading of the events. So I'm wondering if in your words, for the time being, it's kind of placeholder until everybody can view the videos, if you would be able to walk us through, I can tell you what I remember. Um, so I'll I'll start off, okay? So I I do remember that um, Ms. Lewis uh, said that she was going to walk, go home. And uh, the officer said, you can't go home. And that led to their initial um, kind of physical interaction, right? So once, once she started walking back and the and the policeman started walking towards her and telling her that she can't go home, can you, in your words, say what you saw in that very initial interaction?
Um, I will try. Um, I I think a- and and sort of what you've already spoken to, I think is important, which is to say is when Mike had to make that decision, Sergeant Cervantes, she had walked away and I think and and I hope when people get a chance to see this, they will see that he's actually looking back. Because he thinks she's taking off the, no, and going and moving south. And so he looks back, are you guys okay? And then he turns and as he breaks that cover line, that car, he then sees, and his head spins back around now, oh, she's walking to me. And so she does walk up to him and they essentially walk to get towards uh, each other. And he's walking, he's not running, but he is walking quickly with purpose. Um, and he wants to then get onto her, he he essentially reaches out for that right hand. And I I don't know that I would necessarily explain the technique exactly right, but as as Lieutenant Norton might fix it and help correctly, he then wants to try to get that right arm behind her back. And as he starts to um, grab onto that arm and rotate it down, that's when she uh, pulls out of that grasp. I don't know exactly when she scratches his face. Um, but it's at that point that she start, she tries to pull away and then he tries to now um, continue to grab onto her and she ultimately um, then gets enough distance that she's able to actually bring a right uppercut. I think is the, is is the term um, at his head area. And that's when he then has to use a sort of hip roll and uh, over his right leg. And I don't know, Jason, if I'm explaining that very well or not. So and and I think that's when then, then, then they go on, then they go on to the ground.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so just to be clear, well, first of all, I want to, I want to thank the chief and I want to thank the mayor for um, releasing the body camera video. It's something that we spoke at about um, in terms of what could be done. And I encouraged everybody to release as much of this to the public as was possible based on um, what Ms. Reese would allow. So thank you very much for that. And I'm hoping that the full video that you showed today will be accessible, not in the Zoom format, but in the um, PowerPoint or released individually as as movies or video files. So I just want to confirm that that'll be available for the public to view.
Um, I'm not the technical guy to figure that out, but I can clearly try to uh, help make that happen, yes.
Okay, all right.
It'll be part of the meeting record, so.
Uh, okay, so the the entire presentation will be posted on the website as part of the meeting record?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, my, my second question, and I think perhaps this is more for Ms. Reese and and we already talked a little bit about it. But I'd like to hear a bit about how prosecution happens. And what I mean by that is, say for example, uh, heaven forbid we have a murder in this, in this town. Um, there's the people who are directly affected, of course, of their family um, and any of their other loved ones. But it's the state who takes the case, reviews the files and decides what kinds of charges. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm I'm just kind of walking through my understanding of how um, charges are brought against an individual. Um, so in this case, um, when the police do their investigation and they hand over the files of for Ms. Lewis and uh, Mr., is it Mr. Busby? Um, what is that next step that the State's Attorney Office takes? Is there any uh, somebody who presses charges other than the State's Attorney? I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
No, the the prosecutor, the State's Attorney, my office is the one that reviews the police reports. When when the police make an initial arrest, um, they make an arrest based on initial charges. Um, and that person is then booked into the jail. Then we get the police reports and review all of the reports and make the decision about what the actual formal charges are going to be. Um, and then the person is brought in front of a judge, they're arraigned on the charges, they're appointed counsel if they can't afford their own or they hire their own counsel. And then they have a right to have what's called the preliminary hearing where a judge hears the preliminary evidence and makes a decision about whether there is probable cause to proceed with the case. Um, so there's an opportunity for review at the judge level, but the person can waive that if they want to um, and just go forward on with the regular process. So the decisions about charges, um, the final decisions are made by the State's Attorney's Office. And we have reviewed this case, uh, we've reviewed the video evidence, I've reviewed everything that you've seen. I've seen all of the police reports, I've seen all of the video. And we have decided that the appropriate charges have been filed now against Mr. Busby and against Ms. Lewis. And I keep hearing that I'm reviewing the case and making other decisions. I will just tell you all right now, I see absolutely nothing in the reports, in the video, in anything that I've reviewed to suggest that the officers did anything in violation of state law. Um, I'm perfectly fine with their actions in this case and we're proceeding with the prosecution of Mr. Busby and Ms. Lewis.
So where are we in that process right now?
They have been charged, they have been arraigned. Um, and I believe they've both waived preliminary hearing and their cases are set for what's called a felony pre-trial, which will be sometime down the road. Um, the courthouse is currently closed and so the pre-trials have been set into June.
And um, is Ms. Lewis currently uh, in jail?
I believe she posted bond or someone posted bond on her behalf and she's been released.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Reese. Um, I think for now, those are my questions. Oh, actually, I did have one final question. Um, and it just uh, maybe to flesh out a little bit of what Dennis's question was in terms of medical. Um, so under what circumstances, everybody who comes into the jail given a medical assessment uh, in terms of physical issues? So, so we've talked about mental um, and substance abuse, but I'm wondering specifically about the physical.
So I'm going to answer that one also as the State's Attorney and the lawyer for the sheriff. Yes, um, everyone's given a medical evaluation. If anyone has any injuries, they're taken to um, the hospital, Carl Hospital, if that's appropriate. We have a contract with a medical provider to provide medical care for inmates. And of course, again, given the COVID nineteen situation, we're being very, very careful with everyone as they're brought in. As you saw in the video, Ms. Lewis had um, a face mask on when she was coming to speak to the officer. Um, and so she was not taken to the hospital. I don't believe there was any sign of any kind of physical injury to her. Um, and she was uh, combat- combative when she was brought into the jail. That green gown that she was wearing, that is a gown that's put on somebody when we're concerned about them hurting themselves. Um, and so all the proper precautions were taken with her in the jail when she was brought in that night.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Bill Colbrook and then Jared.
Um, Chief, um, the initial information that you provided in your presentation has indicated that this was not a domestic violence uh, incident and that um, at least with the evidence that 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 you know now, that the um, that the lady was not a domestic violence victim. However, there's been a lot of uh, talk um, amongst the community, there's been a lot of letters that we've received uh, in criticism of the Urbana Police Department that uh, the officers are not trained properly in domestic violence situations. Uh, could you speak just a little bit about uh, maybe the prevalence of domestic violence uh, in the city and, you know, how many calls, if you know that offhand um, that the officers respond to and what um, domestic violence training that they received, whether it be in the academy in the field training program or anything ongoing, um, like like trauma-informed policing or or any uh, specific trainings like that. I think it's important to the community and to the council just to kind of understand, you know, since there has been so much criticism, um, what um, what training is um, received by the officers.
So the um, Police Training Institute is where they will get their first um, time or their first exposure to domestic violence issues, uh, exposed to things like the circle of violence and and those things. Um, they will then spend a lot of time in the field training program on on dealing with domestic violence issues as as well. And that's probably where they spend, the they get the most of, I guess they get their most training within um, within that area. Trauma informed is something that I think uh, we as a, as a profession have, they've been a little late to the party for. Um, I know that in the last couple of years, I've been to several uh, trainings uh, with regards to this and to bring this up and to make sure that the officers are aware of that. Um, however, I don't, uh, we have certain trainings and I don't, I I won't be able to speak with a lot of with regards to some of the ongoing trainings like I know that we do with um, with regards to the um, mental health and the verbal persuasion things. Those are things that I know that we've done more. I couldn't necessarily speak and I, you can correct me, uh, Lieutenant Norton, if I'm missing something with regards to exactly the um, I couldn't necessarily speak and either you can correct me, uh Lieutenant Norton, if I'm missing something with regards to exactly the um ongoing domestic violence training outside of what they would do in like a, say, roll caller.
Well, yeah, we have uh ongoing training every, uh, every week. Roll call training in domestic violence is one of those topics, one of the topics that they, they train on. They have certain aspects that they're required to train on annually, um like the chief uh spoke of. Um, there, there are diversity classes that, that people go to or which, which may be an aspect of that, or our officers go to. But uh, uh, the mobile training unit offers uh different classes on domestic violence, certainly not our whole department doesn't go to that at one time. But we tried to get as many officers as we can through the mobile training unit and those classes that they offer those. So, um, and I, and I will say domestic violence is one of our highest volume calls. Uh, it's, it's several times a day, I, I would, I would guess without the numbers in front of me. But it, it's, it's a regular, it's a high-volume call.
I appreciate your answer. Um, I guess I just have a, a comment. Um, I think in cases like this, uh with such interest of the community, you know, transparency uh by the police department, transparency by government is not only needed, it's called for, it's in the best interest of the community. I just appreciate the efforts of you, chief, uh, and you lieutenant, you know, for um giving the presentation and, and for the mayor as well. Uh, just to try to give as much information, shed as much light on what has happened in our community. To not only the city council, but to the residents of Urbana and Champaign as well. Thank you.
Jared?
Um, let's see, what was I, uh, one thing that I wanted uh to mention. We uh received a request for information on the civilian police uh review board. I just wanted to let uh anybody who's listening know that if you go onto the city's website, under government, under boards and commissions, on the right-hand side, you'll see a list of all the boards and commissions. Uh, the civilian police review board is on the right-hand side, and if you click on it, you can go to that page and find information about CPRB. The chair of which is Mikhail Lubiansky, and uh there are six other members and two members of the city staff that are on as well. One question, Julie, you weren't here when I asked this earlier, uh, and so nobody could really comment on it. I was asking if uh the chief or the mayor was aware uh about any charges that may have been being pressed against uh Camarian uh by Ms. Lewis. Uh, if those, if there was any investigation into that or any charges.
I've seen nothing in any of the reports um that suggests that Ms. Lewis said anything about Mr. Busby being physically abusive to her. There's a witness who sees the two of them arguing outside of the apartment. There's discussion, I think his mother says something about the two of them arguing over the phone. Um, but Ms. Lewis never says anything to anybody about being physically abused by Mr. Busby. There's no independent witnesses to that. As Chief Seraphin said, the call came in as a shots fired call. Um, there's, there's just nothing in any of the reports or in any of the evidence of any indication of domestic violence.
Chief, uh, you had mentioned uh that we did go into their apartment after the fact and check it out. The door was open and there was quite a mess, I remember you saying.
That's correct. It was net, there was a lamp that was knocked over and I think there was food that had been strewn about yesterday.
Do we have, uh, Julie has mentioned a, a witness to seeing them arguing outside, but uh were there witnesses to the gunshot?
Um, some of the people that were there saw, heard a shot and then saw him with the gun. I don't know if I have anyone who actually saw him firing off the gun, like actually witnessed that actual action, but heard the shot, drew their attention and then saw him with the gun around and the magazine falling out.
Okay, uh, those were my last uh two questions. Uh, oh, I guess, guess I had one more I'd asked uh after our interview uh the other day if we were gonna get a formalized report of some kind and, and writing uh your words and on, on paper and uh lieutenant's words on paper other than just uh the record that we're leaving uh via video here. And uh pending any further investigation, are we going to see that in the, in the future at some point?
At, at this point, I will have to consult with uh my bosses to see how, how much further we're gonna go with regards to this. I was glad that we were able to get the use of force review board findings done and authored. And um, a, at this point, I, I guess I will say that remains to be seen. I'm hopeful that the discussion that we've had tonight and what we've been doing for the last two and a half hours indeed shed, shed some light on our thoughts and our um opinions on what happened.
So, no uh further discussion is expected at this time unless maybe we see something through the CPRB?
Well, to see that, yeah, if that process were to, to go forward, yes, indeed, then we would have to address specifically that particular process. And like I said, I said, that, I guess that's what I'll tell you for now.
Uh, we haven't, uh, just adjacently, uh, question, uh, we haven't gotten any uh reviews from Michelle in a long uh time about our stats and where things are standing with that. Uh, when is our annual report due or uh when are we gonna hear from her again?
Um, I'm sorry, you mean Melissa?
Yeah, I'm sorry, did I say, I meant Melissa, I'm sorry.
Um, so yes, we will, we will have more time with Melissa. Uh, we've been trying to, she actually has been working from home and working on some projects. So, yes, we will, we will get back on the, the radar. Maybe it will be in a Zoom format as opposed to um in person in the council chambers. I don't, we do not have a date set, though.
Okay. Uh, one final comment, Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you, we're also are waiting, we'll be waiting yet on the um state's attorney's uh review of this as well.
Okay. Uh, I just want, I hope, once the uh video is up and everyone is able to see it in real time, uh, folks will have a, an understanding of this. I think the situation was an extremely difficult situation for the officers, having come into a call with uh the call that they got. But uh, you know, we had a really long discussion about the merits of, you know, if uh Sergeant Cervantes made the right call coming out behind a patrol car uh to pursue her or not, and then once he saw that she was walking back towards him, uh, whether or not he again made the right call to continue closing that distance. I think we have a, under, an understood disagreement in, in those actions uh that whether, you know, you could always look back in hindsight and say, yes, you know, we've done something different, should he have done something different? Uh, and it's, it's easy to critique that on the back end, it's not so easy to do it in real time in real life. But I think that they uh tried to do what they, what they could in that situation. Uh, I just wish that it hadn't gone down like that. I wish he hadn't gone out and reached his hand out. I don't think she had done anything other than being, you know, disobedient at that time, which kinda goes to what Sharice was saying. You know, if you're just disobedient to police officers, is that enough to, you know, have them lay hands on you and uh take you into custody? And that's a, obviously a larger societal discussion that we all have to have amongst ourselves and, you know, the nature of the citizenry and uh their police. But I appreciate uh within a short period of time us getting uh the video out for this. I hope that it's uploaded quickly for people to review it. I look forward to hearing more from all of the public about how we can do things better going forward. Thank you.
Um, Eric, do you have your hand up?
I, I do. I, I thought I was done talking, but I just wanna respond to Jared. And, and of course, Jared, uh, the uh, the officer would have behaved differently had he known, as we now know after the fact, that she wasn't, that she didn't have a gun. But he did not know that one way or the other at that time. So, that makes a tremendous difference to me. But anyway.
Uh, Bill and then Sharice.
Um, yeah, just wanna thank, thank uh the police force again for uh providing all this information. It's been um, been interesting. It's the first time I saw uh body cam footage. And I know I've seen some squad car footage, but seeing it all, how um events unfold, I think is really helpful. I did have one question about um as far as how the command goes in that sort of situation. You said there were seven people total. I remember counting at least six that I remember seeing video of. And in this case, they were doing different things. They had, you know, some other people detained and, and one guy was blocking the end of the road. Is there one person in that situation that's kind of in command of the, such like an incident commander of that particular incident, or if it dragged out farther, would that come into play? Or is everybody pretty much operating on their own?
So, each shift is, is commanded by two patrol sergeants and then are, are acting each shift as one patrol sergeant. So, typically, the patrol sergeants would be the ones that are uh the most experienced and, and take charge of the situation. Doesn't mean that always happens that way. Now, if you recall, there were two sergeants in these videos. Sergeant Coper was up in Crestview Park dealing with the juvenile up there while Sergeant Cervantes was down on the road. Now, Officer Ruff and Sergeant Cervantes uh had to share duties on when they were dealing with Mr. Busby and Mrs. Lewis. Uh, but ultimately, we look towards rank and when that uh isn't available, we look towards experience. So, just because, in any given circumstance, and just because uh there's rank there, that doesn't mean they're absolutely most, uh, I guess qualified for a certain circumstance. So, uh, yeah, but in this circumstance, Sergeant Cervantes was in charge of the road, Sergeant Coper up in the hill. They ultimately joined down the road at some point, and I think Sergeant Coper probably took over as the lead.
Yes, because Sergeant Cervantes ends up driving himself to the hospital within the first, within minutes of this event concluding, I've seen.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Uh, Sharice? Can you unmute yourself?
I'm trying, okay, here we go. Um, the only thing, the comment, I just have a comment. And basically, um, what I would like to see going forward is um education, public education regarding uh when one encounters the police. Or when the police encounters the public. Uh, what the, what the public um should, I, I, I think if, if you know the rules, um, then you know more of how to handle yourself. And I know that there are police policies, you know, I went to the, did the citizens uh police training thing. And I understand, I understand that there is um, that resistance in and of itself is an offense. I don't know that everyone understands that. And I think that if one is informed, then they can make choices based on the information that they already know. And so I think going forward, um, as a community service possibly, the, the police department, uh, one way or the other, you know, at the parks, the park functions and stuff that we do um throughout the city can, can um have that kind of information dispersed during, you know, during a more congenial time. But what it will do hopefully is, is to inform the public as to uh the roles that they play in keeping a civil society, a civil uh, uh type of, of um, of relationship. And then you can go from there, you know? If, if stuff gets mucked up, then, you know, it's definitely clear and pointed. Like, well, this is what happened and this is why. I think a lot of our, our, our general public unfortunately is not informed as to policy or as to what um, what makes us something an offense and what doesn't. And um, we maybe watch too much, you know, Law and Order SUV thinking that we know it all. But um, every municipality has, has different ordinances, different ways of handling things. Uh, however, if you put them all together, they still uh in some way, you know, mimic each other. So, I, I don't know, Brian, what do you think about that?
I, uh, well, I appreciate your comments. We've had different things over the years. Um, we've had community outreach. We've had, we had a video series uh called Cops Corner where we would try and pick a topic. Um, and sort of make it fairly short, so people weren't watching or sitting like you did through the Citizens Police Academy for hours and hours. But here's a five-minute video on this, here's a five-minute video on that. Um, I know that Preston James, uh, one of our outreach liaison, uh, he had put together a couple of videos. Um, and then specifically with regards to traffic stops and how to interact with the police and, and what the expectations were on both sides. And um, so your uh, your thoughts are not lost on me. The, the, the best way for us to figure out who and how to plug in and keep those going is, as usually those are the kinds of things that we end up with as a pet project of somebody when that person moves on, um, uh, sometimes we try to find the right fit, but that can be a bit of a challenge. But uh, you know, even things like you said at the park. So, yes, thank you for that idea.
Okay.
Reese, that is something our community outreach specialist will, will be doing. Uh, Preston James did work on that, especially with the teens, and will continue that when we fill his position. And I, I do think it's important for us all to, to rec, to, to acknowledge that this part of town where this incident occurred, and this was a, a call in response to a shooting, has, has seen um more than its fair share of gun violence. And in fact, the very next day, a fifteen-year-old teen was murdered a few blocks from where this, this shooting happened. So, so the, the, while we're all um buried in the pandemic at the moment, the underlying issues in our community are still very much with us. And gun violence um is, is one of the worst and the biggest challenges that we face. So, I appreciate you all for um thoughtfully reviewing this. And um, we will, we'll um be reporting back on next steps. But anyway, thank you for, for your attention tonight. So, um, if there are no more comments, we'll move on to um unfinished business. And there is none. Reports of standing committees?
Aha. And that's?
That's not quite you yet.
Oh, not quite me yet, okay.
Okay, reports of special committees? Uh, there are none, and then?
Can I do one, please?
Reports of special committees?
Yeah. Mayor, we, we, we have the committee of the whole report that uh, that uh council member Jacobson should be giving.
Yeah, but that will follow um reports of special committees on the agenda.
Is that the bond cap or no?
No, no, the, the, the two resolutions go before the reports of special committees.
Not on this agenda.
Not on our agenda.
Okay, so I've got a, I've got two different agendas here.
Okay.
It's item G.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Very, something very fast. I just wanted to report that uh I received an email from Elise Poyet, who uh is one of the representatives of the city of Chauville, our sister city in France. And she writes and says that I trust this e, email will find you well. I also hope that your loved ones are doing fine. With this short notice, I want to assure you that in these extraordinary and difficult times, the city of Chauville is thinking of its American friends of the city of Urbana. Our common history taught us that we know how to defeat our enemies and we will win this war. And she's referring to the uh coronavirus epidemic. Please receive our strongest support and warmest greetings, all the best from France. And then her name, the Pierre Elise and all the people of Chauville. I thought that was really thoughtful of her to send us a greeting of hope and encouragement. I looked at the map of uh France and I found that the whole eastern side of uh the French nation is rather heavily involved in the uh the whole eastern side of the French nation is rather heavily involved in the in the coronavirus epidemic as well. And they have quite a few cases uh, for a smaller national area than the United States, but uh, uh, it was appreciated. Just thought I'd share that with everybody.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, now we move on to our, um, this would be the report from the committee of the whole. Is that right, Charlie?
I, I think that is, this is Eric.
So, go ahead, Eric.
That is correct. So on behalf of the committee of the whole, I would like to move resolution number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero one nine R. Resolution considering the intention of the city of Urbana, Urbana, Illinois. The transfer volume cap in connection with private activity bonds. And this is with respect to the private bond cap allocation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members. Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts? Roberts?
Unmute. You unmute yourself?
Yeah, I thought I did. I was being polite. I muted myself after I spoke. My answer, my, my response is yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion pass. Next, please, Eric.
On behalf of committee of the whole, I move resolution number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two zero R. Resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, et cetera. Uh, this is the Illinois Housing Development Authority Series twenty twenty.
I'll second that one.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is reports of officers. I did have a couple of things. In the past couple of days, we received donations of PPE, the Personal Protective Equipment. Um, the Chinese American Association of Central Illinois is delivering sixteen hundred surgical masks to the city of Urbana tomorrow, and we're very grateful for that donation. These are disposable masks that we can use from here on out for activities, issues at the city building and beyond. And then we also received a donation of PPE from Icon Hospitality, Mr. Harris Purves. Um, Icon Hospitality is the development partner for the Landmark Hotel. So it was very, um, great surprise to receive this donation and they sent an assortment of surgical masks, gowns and infrared thermometers. And the gowns and infrared thermometers are especially welcome these days. So they uh, went straight to the fire department who is coordinating our uh, supplies and safety for the city building. So we're extremely grateful for that donation as well. And then sadly today, COVID nineteen took another life in Urbana. And the daughter of Ms. Lydia Stevens posted this on Facebook a few hours ago, but she, she talked about her mother and said that her mother lived a life full of love and creativity. And some of you may remember Lydia as being, um, one of the vendors at Market at the Square. She was one of the artisans who sold things at the market and um, she will be missed by many. We offer our condolences to family and friends and loved ones of Ms. Stevens. Okay, under new business.
Mayor, mayor, if I may, I just wanted to, uh, report, we have the body camera footage, uh, all posted to the city website. So if anyone wasn't able to see it, they can go to the city council meeting page, um, where we post the agenda and everything else. They'll see a link there labeled body foot, camera footage, and you'll see all six videos that were included on the PowerPoint tonight.
Thank you to the amazing Jason Wigg. I'm not sure which screen to look at. I guess I should look this way.
I don't see your face on any of them, actually.
Diane, did you want to say anything about Market of the Square reopening?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Jared. Market at the Square will reopen this coming Saturday, May second. And it will be a food only market, although there will be vendors, um, they're selling cloth fabric masks as well. But if, um, we have worked very, our staff, Brandon Boys, Brian Heaton and his staff have worked very, very hard and closely with the champagne Urbana Public Health District to redesign the market, reconfigure it to maximize safety for the vendors and for the public. And you will be required to enter the market. You'll need to be wearing a mask. Um, there will be physical distancing and a long list of procedures will be in place to again protect the health and safety of the public. So we know it was very important to open the market. We wanted to continue to support the regional food economy to provide another venue for buying, um, fresh, healthy food. And frankly, it's a real psychological boost to be able to say the market is opening. It won't, it won't be the social event that it usually is, but it will get to the heart of the farmer's market, which means the food and products that are grown, made and produced right here in the region will be sold. So I hope everyone can come and, um, we'll look for you on Saturday. And if all goes well, this will be the weekly event that it always has been.
Diane, uh, where could the public find out the, uh, the different items that you just spoke about? Is it, is it posted online somewhere for people?
Sure, the, um, the Market at the Square has a Facebook page and then there's a, uh, city on the, they have their own. Do they have their own webpage this year? I think they do, yes.
Yeah, I believe we do. Yeah.
Yeah. And those, those guidelines will be very, um, will be posted all around the market as well. So we ask people to, it's going to be, you know, you're going to have to learn some new habits and new procedures. But I think, um, it's, and planned as well as it possibly could. And we just, we're looking forward to a good day. Alrighty, ready to move on to new business. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two three, which is an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment, two oh five North High Cross Road for OSF Healthcare. It's Plan Case twenty three ninety eight M twenty, Community Development, and Lily will be presenting.
And while Lily is setting up, I'll just, um, she has it on the screen here, but I think she'll be presenting both ordinances together. So I didn't know if you wanted to read the other one as well.
Yeah, the other ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five, which is an ordinance approving a special use permit for two oh five North High Cross Road, OSF Healthcare. Plan Case twenty three ninety nine S U twenty. Thank you, Lori.
Lily, if you can hear us, you're muted.
Lost the mute button. I apologize. Um, well, what I, what I would like to, to repeat, but not just to myself, um, I'm going to try to be brief. But I really quickly want to call out that many members of OSF's team is there on this virtual call, uh, meeting. And two people, Kristen Crawford is here to answer any development questions and Dr. Rogers um, is here to talk about OSF's intent to expand their services in Urbana, if you choose to call on them. In the spirit of brevity, uh, OSF Healthcare is requesting two things, uh, rezoning from B one neighborhood business to B three general business, and then also requesting a specially used permit to establish a medical office um, I am on a B three property. So obviously one has to come before the other. The B three rezoning, um, is what you would want to consider first and then, and then the specially used permit. Um, at the April ninth, twenty twenty Plan Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend approval of the rezoning request and special use permit with the conditions. Sorry, there you go. Uh, you can see the site here is at University Avenue and High Cross Road. It's a two point two acre site that's zoned B one neighborhood business. Um, next to Aldi's, who also has a special use permit for operating a, a larger grocery store over thirty five hundred square feet. Um, and in the two thousand and five Urbana Comprehensive Plan was identified as community business in the area. Uh, the site has been remained vacant for, uh, for numerous years, um, ever since it's come into the city. And it was subdivided in two thousand and four when Aldi bought the property and, uh, built their grocery store. Quickly talking about the, um, intensity, a little bit of a medical office. The proposed medical office will have, uh, special providers and scheduled appointments, much like offices in the main hospital. OSF anticipates maximum staff of twenty employees, ten to fifteen employees working at any given time. Their proposed operating hours currently are eight AM to five PM. Uh, and there is a six foot wall between the residential properties of Berinder Commons in the site, which should mitigate some of the, uh, issues for potential issues if people have them at the residences. And the zoning, uh, criteria does explicitly ask how long the property has been vacant under its current zoning. Um, and it's been zoned, zoned this before two thousand and four when it was, uh, sectioned off by the Aldi parcel. It was, and, uh, two thousand when it came into the city. Plan Commission had a public hearing and we talked a little bit about, a lot about, bit about the sidewalk crossing. The, uh, new medical office, if approved, would have to connect the sidewalk from Aldi to Berinder Commons to the north. Um, the sidewalk itself does not connect to the Kikapu Rail Trail or to the intersection, um, which cuts people off from the trail and the Walmart. Um, as you can imagine, is a connection issue, not just for pedestrians and bicycles, but also for transit users as well. Trying to access, um, either grocery store on either side. OSF Healthcare is a partner in health, uh, in the community. They have a community health needs assessment that they do with Carl, the CU Public Health District, United Way. They identify several different goals in there, mostly to, um, you know, reduce obesity by providing better access to healthy food and, and stores that's provide food. Um, they also have much, uh, access to parks and trails in there as well. Um, so the city staff had prepared a condition for contributing to uh, a, the connection to that intersection. So there was connection for people on the north side of the intersection to access the Kikapu Rail Trail in the Urbana Walmart. Also, the people from the south side, and this includes transit stops, being able to, uh, access the Aldi and the medical office. Um, this project was estimated cost, uh, at a hundred and twenty, hundred thousand dollars. Um, the city plans to apply for an Illinois Department of Transportation grant in the next year. So there's no grant guarantee that the city will get the grant. Uh, the condition was conditioned on whether the city would get the grant. Um, at Plan Commission, city staff recommended a condition. But OSF had not had the chance to consider whether or not they agreed to it or not. The condition wouldn't have been inappropriate to a special use permit if OSF disagreed. Um, and so Plan Commission revised the condition. They thought in general it was a great idea. Um, but they wanted to be more of a voluntary and cooperative Um, at Plan Commission, they had two letters of support for the path improvement. A third letter, and it was in your, uh, council packet, was also submitted um, after the Plan Commission for support of the path extending to that intersection. Um, I'm going to go through the findings rather than read criteria. Um, for the sake of brevity, but also they're just summarized, uh, criteria. The OSF Healthcare is requesting the rezoning from B one Neighborhood Business Zoning District to B three General Business Zoning District at two oh five North High Cross Road. Additionally, OSF Healthcare requests a special use permit to build a medical office in the B three General Business Zoning District. The proposed B three General Business Zoning District and special use permit would allow the applicant to build a medical office. This would be generally compatible with the community business future land use designation of the two thousand and five Urbana Comprehensive Plan. The proposed B three General Business Zoning District would be compatible with the surrounding area. And as the adjacent property is a business of a similar scale and the residences nearby are separated by either an opaque wall or a road, the proposed B three General Business Zoning District will likely have no discernible impact uh, on adjacent property values. Currently, the two point two acre property is vacant. The subject property is suitable for business uses like those allowed in the proposed B three General Business Zoning District. The property is located near a major intersection and near, um, other businesses. The proposed use is generally conducive to the public convenience at this location as it is located in an area with other business uses, I seventy four and at its, uh, major intersection. The proposed use would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it's, shall be located as leaving the site vacant would likely be more harmful to a neighborhood. The proposed use conforms to the regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the B three General Business Zoning District in which it shall be located as it is allowed use in the district, uh, with the approval of a special use permit. Um, city council has the following options for the rezoning, uh, for an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment. The first option is to approve the ordinance and the second option is to deny the ordinance. City council has the following options for an ordinance approving a special use permit. The first option is to approve the ordinance, approve the ordinance with conditions or deny the ordinance. Um, now it's, at the April ninth, twenty twenty meeting, Plan Commission voted unanimously, six days and zero nays, toward, uh, the city council with a recommendation to approve the zoning map amendment and special use permit with the following conditions you can see on the screen for the special use permit. Uh, that the applicant develops the property in general conformance with the site plan, um, which is ordinance attachment A. And that the applicant works with the city, surrounding businesses and property owners to explore the possibility of contributing financially to the construction of a multi-use path to connect the OSF and Aldi sites to the northwest corner of University Avenue and High Cross Road. And staff concurs with that opinion. And I'm here for any questions.
Questions for Lily. Uh, is that Bill with a hand up and then, um, looks like Mary Alice? And Charisse?
And, and look, I don't really understand why this requires B three. It seems like it's no more impactful than the Aldi that exists there. Um, so I don't have any, um, opposition for this medical use or the rezoning. I do have some questions about, um, why the sidewalk wasn't connected to the intersection when it was first subdivided. Um, does our subdivision, ordinance and, and, and rules when you do a subdivision like that require sidewalks to be connected to intersections? I, I think this was done about the same time as Walmart, two thousand and five or six.
Uh, is it done in two thousand and four? And I'm not quite sure. I'd have to look into that, whether it was required in two thousand and four when it was subdivided or whether it was, um, required today.
Okay, so if it was required, then apparently they got some kind of waiver or something. It seems like from, I've actually looked at the, the, uh, usage of that area on Strava. You got heat maps from people that, that record their activities. And even for walking, there's quite a bit of use, well, for walking and, and biking, there's quite a bit of use, of course, on the trail. But also, um, But also High Cross Road, people going up High Cross Road, coming down from Behringer Circle, I think, where it comes out on High Cross Road and then coming down this sidewalk as far as it can go. Then cutting across, you can see where they cut across and then come south at the corner there and from the northeast corner. So there's people using that intersection both sides. And right now, we have the existing pedestrian lights. So we have basically pedestrian crossways to nowhere, to the corner there. So it would make sense to have that, that bill. But I do also understand that it's not really, it's not going to benefit OSF probably as much as it will Aldi. Aldi would get more business from foot traffic off the trail. I know people are using, are going from Scottswood and from Surrana Estates. They're walking to Walmart and, and to Aldi. And they aren't going to go back to Smith Road where about the only crossing is the, on the other light crossing to get across University there. Does the state have any, the university is a state highway there, right?
Yes.
Do they have responsibility to provide any of this pedestrian infrastructure since it's their road?
I'd have to look into that.
Okay. And I guess the other option would be some kind of special assessment where we could assess both properties. But would, would they have to agree to that or is there some mechanism where we can do that even if they don't agree?
For OSF to have a special assessment?
Well, I think we could assess probably both properties in the subdivision that would benefit. Maybe even, you know, maybe even Behringer. I don't know. You could argue they would benefit. But maybe that's a question for, for Lori or Jim, if we need to go that route. What other options are there? I think we should try to make it happen pretty soon and not. My concern with waiting for a grant is we have a lot of other things we want to use pedestrian grants for. And the state has a limited amount of money, although I think more now, or they were going to have more now. Who knows what with the, with the coronavirus, how that's going to affect things. But there's a limited, limited amount of money in, in the grant process. Just wondered what other more immediate options there might be to make that connection.
I think that's something that we will be looking at. Perhaps we can get a list together and share that with you separately. There's, of course, a lot of potential options, but we do want to, of course, look also at 2004. And was that a waiver or was it in the annexation agreement as a waiver? So let us do some digging on that, if you don't mind.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I don't think, I don't, again, I don't think the OSF would necessarily benefit from it any more than Aldi would. Although their employees would probably like to be able to get over to the, to the tray out for lunch, lunch walks and things like that. Thanks.
Mary Alice and then Charisse.
I'm wondering, Lily, first of all, it's lovely to see you. You're like a regular attendee now. We've seen you almost at every single one. I'm wondering what B zoning, if any, automatically allows a medical office by right?
None.
None. So what zoning, what zoning category does allow a medical office by right?
Oh, no. So there's no zoning districts that allow or a medical office by right? You, for all districts that it is allowed to have a, a medical office, you need to have a special use permit.
Okay, all right. I mean, I was going to ask why we're doing B3, but it sounds to me like they have to do a special use permit anyway. Whatever zoning they chose. And then I was hoping that OSF could talk a little bit about your thoughts on the multi-use path and if they are interested in cost sharing that with the city and possibly Aldi.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tony Trad. I'm the manager of real estate services for OSF. I'm not sure if everybody can hear me.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to introduce myself and introduce the team and, and see if there's any questions. When the question right there that we can help answer. Again, I'm Tony Trad on the manager of real estate services. Dr. Jared Rogers, who is the president of the hospitals on the line as well. We also have Kristen Crawford, who is the obligatory development manager for the eastern region for the ministry. And then we also have Josh Markovich, who is our broker representing us in this transaction with Aldi. And so when we originally started working on this, the intent was to build a facility there to utilize and reach the eastern region. Lily really, Lily reached out to us and started, had some questions about if we'd be willing to do this or not. And as you may know, OSF is a ministry-based healthcare system. We have been in the communities for over 120 years. So any discussion regarding the wellness or the betterment of a community is always welcome on our, on our side. We just feel that to, to, you know, carry the burden of the entire expense of this project on our own is a difficult thing. But we are always and very welcome to reach out or, or work with the community that's surrounding us that would all benefit. You know, there's mention of all, all these. There's mention of Walmart. There's, you know, the, the mention of the city and the state assistance as well. So it is, it isn't as if we are opposed to any walking trail. If anything, I think it does benefit not only Aldi's, but it also benefits us as well, as, as well as the rest of the community. I just think it's extremely difficult to carry the entire burden of that expense at this time. So that, that's, you know, and speaking with Lily and having a little bit of help with the folks from the planning department. We, we felt very confident that we would sit down and speak to any party who'd be willing to come in and, and help us.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, pretty much. Thank you.
The clerk has his hand up. Charlie, did you have something we needed to deal with before we go on to the other council members?
Yes, just remind you that we'll need to extend the meeting here shortly. We're coming up against our first time limit of 10:30.
Good grief, okay. Is there a motion to extend for, what are we at, 10:17? Till 10:45, just in case.
We want to extend the meeting till 10:45.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, it's opposed. Okay, that passes. I think Bill Colbrook next.
No, I'm next.
Oh, you're next. All right, should we?
Okay, I do have some questions for Lily and Lori and probably Mr. Trad. Trade, Trad. Anyway, my, my question is basically, will this, this particular building, this be fall under the same exemption status that the rest, that other OSF properties fall under?
Yes.
Property tax exemptions?
Yeah. So, so it'll fall, it'll, it'll, it'll not be contributing financially to the city.
And the upkeep. If it's owned by OSF Healthcare, which is a nonprofit, they will not be required to pay property taxes.
Well, they will apply for that and we don't make that determination, of course, but.
Okay, no, well, of course, we don't make that determination or we wouldn't have had to write out a check. My question then is, what other businesses have, have, have there been any other businesses that do fall under the B1 that, or, or B3 that have shown any interest in this property next to Aldi? That would be financially contributing to the, the city of Urbana, tax-wise?
Because that's between two property owners, an owner who would want to sell their property and an owner who, or a potential person who's interested in it. The city has no record of any interest or other buyers who've come up to Aldi, who owns the property currently for the, for this.
And Lily, you said that it's been vacant since 2004, is that correct?
Before that, yeah.
Right, when it was farmland, yes.
Under its, yes, under its current zoning, it's been vacant since 2000. But before that, it was Champaign County B2 and it was vacant.
Okay, so my, my question, my next comment or question, is there any type of, of deal that can be made so that there will be a financial contrib, contribution from OSF to the city of Urbana regarding this if they're not going to be paying taxes? This would be just another parcel added to their list, many, of many parcels that they already own that takes away revenue, so to speak. Because at the, at the moment, Aldi owns this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Aldi's paying property taxes on it?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. Behringer Commons does have some interesting arrangements, but I don't think it follows, this property falls under those arrangements for property tax payments. So I think, I think so, yes.
So to answer your question, in terms of the rezoning, we cannot place any conditions on a rezoning in the state of Illinois. In terms of the special use permit, any conditions that city council may elect to put on, on a project is outlined in the zoning ordinance in terms of, they basically, they need to mitigate the use, the impact on the use. And if you would like, we can go through the specifics on the types of things. But generally, a condition would talk about operations, hours, number of employees, that kind of thing. I, I cannot remember the exact case, but I have a recollection that we had a previous special use permit request with a question from a council member about whether or not the tax exempt status could be considered as, as part of that discussion. And I believe the legal division's ruling on that was, it was not advisable to do so.
Okay, Jim, are you still there? Jim Simon? Is he still here?
Yes.
Okay, maybe he can answer to that.
I would have to, I didn't do the research. I believe Kirk did, but I would have to look into it.
The issue of negotiating a payment in lieu of taxes would be a separate negotiation.
Yes.
Anyway.
Clearly, that, that we could do.
And it's related to the ongoing litigation at this point, so.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the parties, separate from the litigation, if, if they're willing to negotiate some kind of, you know, transactional agreement, won't have an effect on the negotiate, on the litigation unless somebody brings up, well, that's, that should be part of some kind of a larger arrangement. So that would have to be up to the mayor to decide whether to explore that. Pilot agreements last so long.
Well, it's just that, that, you know, it seems like this would have come through a COW meeting first before it just came to city council for approval or whatever, and maybe there's more research that needs to be done.
Well, this is coming to the council appropriately as presented. What you're asking for is something beyond that would be an agreement, some kind of an agreement. Pilot agreement, i- if that's the route to go, that would be separate. And that would have to go to the council.
Okay, that's basically all I wanted to know.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I'm, I'm following up on, on what Charisse, the issue Charisse has raised. I would very much like to see us pursue a pilot agreement for the special use, you know, connected to the special use permit for this particular property. I can't see that there's any harm in doing that, and I think it's appropriate. Now, I guess what I'm hearing from staff is that we can't attach any such condition as a pilot agreement to rezoning. But what I'd like to see us do is defer this and direct the staff to pursue with OSF the issue of what pilot agreement can be negotiated for this property before we, you know, really make a final decision on, on, on the package. On the, especially on the special use permit.
And I would second that thought.
Jim? Can you unmute yours?
There we go. Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The city has to be careful not to present this or have it perceived as coercion, because then it would become a condition of the zoning. And that is not, we can't add that condition on top of a zoning. It, it, it could be a, I'll call it a side agreement. That's not quite the, the clear explanation. But we certainly can negotiate a separate unrelated agreement if OSF and whoever else would participate in this. It would be OSF is what we're talking about. We, if they're willing to negotiate some kind of an arrangement, we certainly can do that.
Well, if we think, if, if we think the zoning is appropriate on its own merits, then we could pass the zoning, but let's defer the special use permit until we start some negotiations on, on pilot.
That one I'd have to, that I don't right now have an answer for. In terms of be, you know, tying a special use permit to a pilot agreement, that would require a little bit of research.
Is there a motion for the first ordinance, 2020-04-023, the zoning?
I haven't had a chance to, to ask a question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dennis.
I did raise my hand. And it had to do with Charisse's, Charisse's question about whether this property, which is in a B, a business zoning district, is truly a business which contributes to the community or is it a nonprofit organization that would be untaxable? And we're learning that it's, we were going to expect that this property will be taken off the tax rolls, which I don't think is exactly a great direction to go in. But I'm not going to, what I would suggest is I would follow Eric's advice. And I would like to see, if not the zoning, at least the approval of the special permit be returned to the committee of the whole for discussion. Because the committee of the whole is really where we'd like to, to receive any kinds of ordinances that come from the planning commission. And I think we've established a preference for that in the past and even rearranged our, the timing of our meetings for that purpose. So I think it could be vetted better by deferring the second ordinance to the committee of the whole and then returning it eventually to discussion in this full city council.
Okay, Bill Brown and then Bill Colbrook.
Yeah, I, I would, I would be opposed to, to sending the special use back for that, for that reason. If there's some other reason, you want to send it back. But I think we need to consider the use and not the ownership. I, I don't see anything in the, in the criteria for approving the use that allows me to consider ownership.
Bill Colbrook?
That's a problem.
Yeah, I had three comments and I think I've got four. The, I'm thinking back to a prior meeting to the issue of why the pedestrian crossing was not done earlier. And I remember somebody, and I apologize, I don't remember who or what meeting, that said that was not financially viable at the time. I don't know what made it not financially, financially viable. I'm, I'm assuming when the Aldis was built or maybe when that intersection was, was originally improved and widened. So I've got that recollection. I just wanted to make that statement. And also, I, as a former member of the Behringer Commons subdivision, I just think that the development on that side of town is a good thing for, for the city and especially for, you know, you know, Ward 6. And, you know, specifically the, the type of business that it is, you know, medical business. I think that's good for the, the east side. I guess lastly, I too would not, I guess, be in favor of sending this back to the committee of the whole just because, you know, it sounds like we're on some shaky legal ground asking, you know, maybe the city to, to do some. uh, asking, you know, maybe the city to, to do some, um, some bending and twisting and, and, you know, I, I don't want us to get into a legal, legal peril and, and put conditions on something that, uh, is, you know, would, would not really stand up, uh, to legal scrutiny. So, I just have a concern a- a- about that.
Uh, Charisse and then Dennis?
Um, yes, this is for Mr. Trad- Trad? I guess, um,
Yes, ma'am.
It, because in the, in the, in the, um, briefing that I saw here in the, well, the, the exhibit here, and it talks about OSF has always been ministry-based, which really means that they are community-based. I'd like to know what other ministries does OSF, uh, have?
Do you want mute, please?
Yeah, mute, baby. You need to take your mute off.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Thank you. I apologize about that. And, and, and it's, it's a great question, and, and I, I'll, you know, of course welcome the rest of the team to jump in, but, you know, ministry base is synonymous with the community base, you know, with, besides, uh, the fact that we have a foundation, uh, lifeline that delivers, uh, patients as well as, uh, does charitable work and, and not to mention some of the other charities that we work with in the community as well. So you, you are correct, and ministry does equal community, and I think that's kind of how we've addressed it. And, and to be honest, we, we really chose this lot, uh, because we wanted to be on the east side of Urbana, not necessarily, uh, just to be in Urbana, but also there's a lot of outlying areas that we can reach as well. Uh, we have patients throughout Urbana and Champaign and Urbana, north, south, east and west. We recently acquired this hospital, uh, about a year and a half ago. And one of the actions we took is there was a vacant facility at Saint Joseph, uh, just down the road from Urbana. Uh, we did put it up for sale, a local individual purchased it. The ca- the communication at that time from the community was, you know, goodness, you know, we really were hoping that you'd be able to open this facility back up. At that stage, our, our strategy was not there, but it is now in terms of trying to serve the, the Urbana community. And so when you do say ministry-based, uh, and, and, uh, my approach to your, to responding to you would be, we, we want to reach Urbana, we want to reach the surrounding areas as well and bring them into town. And, you know, and, and not only just to bring them in, you know, for our, our sake, but, you know, with Wal- Walmart across the street, Aldi's right next door. Uh, you know, there, there, there'll be, there'll be funds, economic impact brought into the community, not just by us, but, you know, folks coming in to have an appointment, uh, could easily walk over to Aldi's and, and do their shopping as well. So, some of our clients are a little older, uh, so that would give, make them, uh, maybe an outing for them, so that they can come in and spend some of their dollars in, in town. But back to your original question, I, I would like to state that, that the ministry is community-based. So we do want other things.
Yeah, but what I mean is like, what other ministries, like, uh, do you work with the homeless? Do you work with, um, the blind, uh, you have a hospice, or is there something, uh, you work with, uh, at-risk youth? What other ministries do you have?
Well, I think that there's quite a bit, and, and I'll have to defer to Dr. Rogers on, on some details about that, but we do have a hospice home. Uh, we also, you know, have the foundation that does, uh, uh, bring funds into the community throughout, uh, not just uh, the Pure area, but throughout wherever we are, and we, there is a lot of charitable use.
Okay.
Um, Mary Alice or Kristen Crawford?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Um, so I work at OSF as well with Tony, and, and we do a lot of work with the FQHC as well, so I wanted to bring that in. And so with Promise, we have given money to them, they, we support them within our hospital. Um, so I wanted to make sure that, that we mentioned that as well. We're looking at other opportunities to, to work with some FQHCs in town.
What is it? FQHB?
FQHC, sorry about that. It's a federally qualified health center, so Promise is the current um, qualified health center, so they provide services for, um, patients that um, either have Medicaid or no pay, and we provide them, um, dollars to be able to support our patients within our hospital. Um, so, to do that, as well as there's a, um, other, other initiatives that we have been looking at with them. We support, um, Aunt Martha's in Danville with our Heart of Mary, and, and they've been looking at opportunities as well. So continuing to, to increase our presence. And we do a lot of nonprofit with, um, patients with Medicaid or, or self-pay. We have a sister's charity program that we provide for our patients, so they can apply for that and, um, our sisters pay for patients to receive care for free.
Oh, 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 okay. Um, and in Urbana, what, what, what ministries do you have set up here in Urbana or Champaign?
That's, uh, um, Promise is the federally qualified health center in Champaign. So we have them in a hospital in Champaign, but we support.
Again, what do they do? Promise? Promise is, what does that mean? What, what do they specifically?
So there.
Could you be more specific?
It, well, and is Dr. Rogers here? Cause he could speak to exactly, um, what they're doing within the community.
Yep. Dr. Rogers? Looks like he's muted.
Somebody's, is somebody muted?
Can anyone hear Dr. Rogers?
I can't.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, you can hear me all right?
Yes.
Um, yeah, yeah, Promise, uh, Frances Nelson in, um, Champaign serves a, a lot of folks that are otherwise underserved, and, and we support them, uh, financially, we support them, uh, certainly in spirit, and they also have, um, a space in our, in our hospital where they have an advanced practice provider, a nurse practitioner who works there, provides primary care for folks in the community. We, um, support crisis nursery, and we have done that for, oh my gosh, um, going on nearly thirty-five years. And, um, again, financially and, uh, with supportive there, security and laundry and food and those such things. We also operate, um, the, um, Community Resource Center, the CRC, and that is based in our, in our hospital, and we provide, um, all kinds of social service connections for people in the community, um, who otherwise couldn't have those connections. We, uh, refer them to, you know, the various social agencies, which they may not have any idea even exist, um, in order to fulfill their needs. Um, we partner with the Champaign County Christian Health Clinic, who u- utilizes space in our, the hospital to provide free care to members of the community. And we also, um, partner with Promise Healthcare Smile Healthy Program to provide, um, care for dental care for children who need to have restorative dental, um, treatments under general anesthesia. We provide that for free, um, to these children. Uh, and, uh, and there are other, other organizations we do partner with. Um, that's just, um, some examples.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I was hoping that Charisse and Eric could speak to, so from what I'm understanding you wanting to do with the special permit, are you suggesting, uh, a discussion, a further discussion about the multi-use path? Or are you talking about a discussion about, um, the property tax?
Uh,
It might be it's property tax.
Yeah, well, it is property tax, but it's payment in lieu of taxes. So we're not, so this doesn't challenge the tax exemption. But this is something that in many communities around the country, uh, organizations that are tax-exempt make some, negotiate with the city or community some, uh, compensatory payment in lieu of taxes, P-I-L-O-T. And I would like to explore the question of whether such a negotiation might be done here. Now, I guess we're told that no such negotiation would be legal with respect to zoning. Uh, zoning can't be conditional on something like that, but, uh, and Jim said he would research whether or not, uh, as a condition of a special use permit, such an arrangement would be legal. And so I guess, I, I, Charisse, if, if, if you, you know, think this is, if, if we're on the same page.
Yeah.
We're, we're suggesting that the, that perhaps we pass the zoning tonight, uh, because it does seem as though the property is appropriate. The, you know, the location, the surroundings are appropriate for that level of zoning that's requested. But that the special use permit be returned to committee of the whole with direction to the staff to explore both the feasibility and the legality of negotiating payment in lieu of taxes.
Jim? Is your hand up?
Yes, it is. If you're talking, I understood your original question to be a payment in lieu of taxes agreement in conjunction with the zoning, i.e. zoning, the requested zoning change would be conditioned in part, among the other conditions that Lily has so carefully laid out. If it would be conditioned on entering into a pilot agreement of some sort, that we can't do. That's been researched.
Got it.
And, or, what I'm talking about is some kind of an agreement. But if you're talking a true payment in lieu of taxes, generally, one, they have a limited duration, and that, that brings up the same situation that the city is facing and has been facing for what, now about eleven years? With Carl, that all started with a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Now you're getting into, uh, terms of settling a lawsuit that's pending. And I'm not going to comment on that, cause I'm not handling the suit, and it would not be appropriate to comment on that suit, or whether or not it should be settled, or what terms it should be settled. But I will tell you, you are entering into that area.
Well, are, are, are you telling me that if we request this for the special use permit for this property, that that would complicate or possibly compromise our position in the entire, uh, legal issue on the tax exemption?
At this point, I can't answer that, and, cause we're now getting into impossible legal strategy, and that's not a subject for public, uh, meeting. And further, um, I don't know what is on OSF's mind in that respect, or their attorney's mind in that respect.
So I think that this hopefully could wait a couple of weeks for us to consider that, and for us perhaps to be advised by you, and for a matter to be discussed with OSF.
I, I think this would really require input from the attorney handling that case, uh, Mr. Fred Grosser. I, I'm not involved directly with these cases.
Okay. Well, I'm really sorry to complicate life so much, but, um, but I, I don't know, I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to see this question, I'd like to see this question explored, and, and, and I would certainly follow, you know, expert advice on, on whether this is, whether this path.
I would as well, but I, I'd like to see more exploration.
Well, are we ready to put this item on the table? Item one.
Looks like there's three hands up, Diane.
We need a motion to continue the meeting.
That's right, I'm asking for a motion.
Well, Mayor, we need a motion to continue the meeting to, for, I would suggest another thirty minutes.
There are motion to continue the meeting to eleven fifteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Um, if we're going to continue discussing along this vein, we really need to get one of these items on the table so it can be discussed, unless, unless there are more technical questions. Okay, is there a motion for ordinance twenty twenty zero four zero two three, which is the zoning map amendment?
Can I do that one? All right. I move, I move that, uh, we approve ordinance number twenty twenty oh four oh two three. An ordinance approving a zoning map amendment concerning two oh five North High Cross Road, OSF Healthcare Plan Case twenty-three ninety-eight dash M dash twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Okay, any discussion on this item? And we have established that it cannot be tied to any conditions related to a pilot agreement.
Right.
Are there any other, uh, issues related to this? Dennis?
No, not on this one.
Okay, Bill, your hand is up. Bill Brown?
No, not on this one, sorry.
Okay. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember's Brown?
Yes.
Culbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
No.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That makes some passes. Next up is ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five, which is the special use permit. Is there a motion to get it on the table? Bill, Brown?
Yeah, I'll move, uh, we approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That Jared?
That was Jared.
Okay. Discussion.
Yeah, I still have my, my hand up. So, uh, I see the advantage of, um, further developing this plot of land, because I think that ultimately it's going to bring, uh, be a, be an activator for, um, more development in this corner of Urbana, which I think is something we've all been waiting for for quite a long time. Um, and I have no problem with OSF as an organization. Um, I've used them in the past, and I think that, uh, generally they are, uh, a positive aspect to the community. But I'd be willing to table, table the, this decision uh, to send it to the committee halls, so that we have options to consider what the alternatives might be to, uh, engage in OSF as they, uh, they'd claim that they're like, uh, excited to be a community, uh, community, a partner with, uh, the city of Urbana as they expand in our area. And I guess I'd love to understand, um, how they see that working in the future to, to, um, accomplish some of the goals that we imagine, whether they be the development of a, uh, a joint-use path, or to contribute in some other manner to the community more directly. So, so I'd like to see ordinance twenty twenty oh four oh two five. I guess I'll make a motion that we move it to, uh, the next committee of the whole for further discussion.
Well, we already have a motion on the table.
Oh, all right. So it's gotta be amendment to the motion.
Are you offering a friendly amendment?
Yeah, friendly, yeah, but it, it would allow us to, um, to learn more about, uh, their, their idea of what partnership is, and, um, to explore, uh, possibilities before we take a final, we take the final action. And also, I also believe that it's important to bring some of these issues that have questions arising in them to, first to our committees, so that we can vet them better than just passing them outright at a committee, at a, at a city council meeting. I, which was, uh, um, um, a request that we, and we've, uh, expressed before here in the city council.
Is, do we need a second on that amendment?
I'll, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment was made by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Um.
Ma- Mayor, it's essentially a substitute motion.
How is that handled?
Basically, that, that they're mending the, the motion to approve, to make it a motion to send to committee.
Okay, so does that require then a roll call vote?
Um.
With a substitute motion?
No, not for an amendment.
Okay. So, um, Jared and then Bill Brown?
Uh, I guess my comments to other councilmembers would, you know, Charisse, Eric and Dennis, I mean, I don't think there's any.
I don't think there's any, uh, question. We all have the same sentiments of, you know, what's gone on with, uh, the hospitals being off the tax rules. Uh, but I would, uh, echo Bill and, uh, Bill, Bill and Bill, uh, that I think this isn't the place, uh, to try and, uh, move our hand. We already have ongoing litigation about this exact issue going on and, uh, of course, no need to drag it on here. And I think it would be a great, uh, development opportunity for East Urbana. So I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of a motion to keep it in, though Dennis, I do, uh, follow you in spirit at the very least of not having seen it in committee of the whole first, uh, voting on it directly on council. Uh, that's the only reason I would support it. I would not support it for the other reasons, uh, stated.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, I, I mean, if this was a annexation agreement or, uh, a development agreement where we were giving up something, I think it would be worth, um, discussing a little bit more, but I think, um, you know, trying to do this piecemeal and we have dozens or scores or hundreds, hundred of properties in town owned by the hospitals, um, that, that, you know, that we need to deal with or that needs to have some conclusion to. I don't think, I don't think, uh, it's really worth trying to do this piecemeal and it could be detrimental to the other effort.
It certainly have an impact. Um, so we have a motion to send this to committee with a second. Are you ready to vote on that?
Well, yeah, so basically the, 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 it's, you know, moved to amend. So the, the motion is to amend to send it to committee. So that, that can be just a voice vote.
Okay.
Diane, can I say something real quickly?
Exactly. Mary Alice?
Yes. Thank you. Um, I, I agree with Jared. I think that, um, and Bill Brown, um, that having a conversation in terms of, uh, property taxes is probably not the general direction to go here. Um, with the ongoing litigation, but I also agree with Dennis in that there's obviously a lot of conversation going on here about what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, about the multi-use path, about a lot of things. And so for that reason, I'm in support of the amendment just to further our conversation on this. Um, but just so I'm clear, I don't think that that further conversation in my mind has to do with property tax.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Charlie, are we voting on the amendment?
Yeah, we're voting on the amendment. We probably should get a roll call just to, just so I can have a count.
Okay. So the motion is to send ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five to, back to committee of the whole. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Culbrook?
No.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
So, so the motion on the floor now is to, is, is, since it's, is to send this to committee. It's sort of a double vote.
Okay. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Culbrook?
No.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Looking at my guns, no.
Roberts?
Yes, thank you.
And Wu?
Yes.
That miss, that, that motion passes. So we are sending ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two five back to committee of the whole. And with no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.
Night everyone.
Good night everybody. Good work.
Good night, John.